This is a test of the City of Palack audio system.
This is a test of the City of Palack audio system.
[1646.84]
So I was extremely proud of everything that we had to go through and how the outcome came. So congratulations, I thank you.
We can do better for our heroes, let's give them another round of applause. Any comments from the commission? Any comments at this time from the commission?
Just want to thank those officers again for their hard work and hard efforts during this most, these most difficult times. Thank you so much for your courage.
Next up is student of the month. Student of the month for the month of November. Commissioner Jones is with me this month. So just before we get started, Commissioner Jones, you got any words for us?
I'd just like to congratulate all of the students for the hard work and dedication they have in the parents, in the classroom and outside of the classroom. Continue to be outstanding students and citizens.
Thank you for those words. Now for student of the month, there's a quick disclaimer that we have every month. The disclaimer is that I'm gonna mess up at least three of these names. And so we will try not to mess them up, but if we do, blame it on my head and not my heart. So as we go through student of the month for November twenty twenty-one. Commissioner Campbell will be quick to correct me because he knows most of the students. And so we're gonna start out right now with our student of the month. Brown and Pierce Elementary School, Emily Nelson. Children's Reading Center Charter School, Easton McKinnon. Gilchrist Academy, Kristen Flager. James Daylong Elementary School, Kayman Holden. Kelly Smith Elementary School, Mia Kate Saff. Mellon Learning Center, Kaiten Limelin. Mellon Learning Center, K through twelve, Sierra Hickey. Picture on the water taxi. From William Mosley Elementary School, Nigel Nesbit. From Palaca Junior Senior High School, Justice Curry. And now Baptist Academy, Tally Spencer. Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Faith George. And from Putnam Edge High Schools, Zakaria Jackson. George, we have, we have one of our students present, right? Where's George? Come on up so we can see you. Congratulations. So for everyone, we're gonna go, we're gonna go back live next month for student of the month. This will be the last month that we do it virtually. But first and foremost, I want to make sure we thank a special group of folks who are in Zoom land with us right now. And that's our educators, and our educators work tirelessly with these children every day that they're in school. And they sacrifice so much and they hardly ever get to thank you that they deserve. And so we want to make sure right now we take time out to say thank you to our educators for the work that they do with our young people. Let's give them a round of applause. The next group that we want to say thank you to are the parents and extended family members, neighbors and friends who are assembled on Zoom as well. For our young recipients of our student of the month, we want to thank you because it truly takes a village to raise a child. Let's give them a round of applause. And so the last thing we want to do is I want to. Casey Griffin. Casey Griffin, where are you?
She's, she's.
Hey, wanna make sure we get your special recognition, say thank you. We got all the educators in this room, stand up for me right quick. So we're gonna give you. We've got three on the dice as well, really five. But we want to, we want to thank you guys. More than anything else, we want to thank our young people. And every time we do student of the month, I recite the same thing that I learned forty-one years ago as a, as a third grader. And that's a little longer than Commissioner Campbell's been living. But in third grade with Ms. Green, we started every day out, and Commissioner McCaskill, you can attest to it. We started every day out by saying, "I am somebody, if my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." You guys are somebody great, you're destined for greatness, we're so proud of you. And we love you from the bottom of our hearts from the city of Palaca. We look forward to you being the leaders of tomorrow. So again, we just want to give a round of applause to our student of the month. And this concludes our student of the month services for this month. And all other recognitions for kids are gonna be canceled until next football season. So I've got another group of young people. That we want to recognize, and then if you guys remember. At our last meeting, we recognized the Palaca High School nineteen eighty-one state championship team. It was their fortieth year anniversary of winning a state championship. So it's been forty years since they won a football state championship. And I was probably about the same age as many of those guys are sitting here with these jerseys on in this room. But we want to make sure that we recognize some champions of our own. In the Putnam, in the Putnam League, I'm gonna ask the coaches to come forward first at this time. So in our ten U Pot Warner Division, we've got some champions of our own. And we want to make sure that we recognize our young people. They went undefeated all season, had a tough loss in the playoffs. But we're looking for them to bring home the championship next year with more agility, more speed, more strength, and better grades, right? So at this time, we're gonna do a special recognition of, of the team. And as I call you. Will have you come up center and pick up your award. Number thirty-five, Jared Curry. All right, just guys, just stay up front, everybody step front. Slide, we're gonna slide you over to the, once you take your picture, we'll slide you back over to the right. Just take your picture. Come on. Yeah, help me out, Kim. Number thirty-two, Steve Davis. Number nine, Nolan Irwin. Number four, Jayden Nisaw. Number eight, Timothy Gaggen. First person I heard, cheer for themselves. Number five, Bodie Green. All right, this guy looks like Bodie. Number twelve, Bryce Green. All right, number twenty-three, Luke Griffin. Luke isn't here, he looks like Jeff. Number twenty-nine, Jaquan Jackson. Number thirty, Jacob Miller. Number ten, Bradson Moore. Put him on the side. Number forty-five, Jaden Peoples. Number one, Jaden Perry. On that side, Jaden. Number twenty-four, Ryan Robbins. Number twenty-two, Hunter Sadler. He looks like Hunter. Number fifty-five, Justin Sadler. Number fifty-eight, Clayton Shivers. I got two? Number seven, Clayton Shivers, the fourth. I'm gonna go out on a limb and say y'all brothers. Number nineteen, Preston Smith. Number eighty-eight, Angel Torres. All right, number twenty-one, Grady Yelmanns. Number eleven, Jackson Young. Hey, Jackson, there's a wall at the end of this. Head coach, Brandon Teal. Assistant coach, James Green. And assistant coach, Donnie Eastlaw. All right, guys. Coach Teal, you got any words for us? Guys, hold up for me.
Is it on?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say. Congratulations, guys. Because we couldn't do it without you guys. This is a special group of kids. We started out with twenty-two, twelve kids never played football before. And it's amazing feat to go undefeated for the whole season, and we can't wait to do it again next season. We'll give them a round of applause, let's go, guys. I got one more thing. Hey, and to the parents, we couldn't do it without y'all, with the support and the commitment, I want to thank y'all too, appreciate it.
All right, I had an opportunity to talk to these guys a little earlier, so I'm gonna let the commissioners start out. If you got anything you want to say to these young people.
Congratulations, guys, the excitement that you all brought into this commission room is totally contagious. I'm so proud of you guys and looking forward to our next season. Way to go.
I just want to congratulate each and every one of you guys for the hard work and effort that you put in. You see just how much it paid off for you guys. A number of you guys are new to the sport and some of you guys are experienced. So together, you guys, play together and be unselfish, that's always a way to come out a winner. And then you take that same attitude in the classroom, it's all right.
Mr. Jones. I just want to say thank you to the parents, the parents and the coaches. And you wonderful players for the season that you guys have had. And your enthusiasm to today make me look forward to this meeting, you know, it goes three hours and I was kind of like lagging coming in late. But you guys have got me pumped up, let's go, all right?
I don't know what he's talking about, about a three-hour meeting, but I am excited to have you all here. I can tell your energy, your energy here was enough, so I can imagine you all on the field. Kudos, we look forward to you next year, to the coaches, thank you for your commitment. A lot of times, just you alone being in the presence of these young men are taking them in the right direction. To the parents, thank you for having your youth involved in the sports here in Palaca. Again, just thank you to everyone, kudos, see you all next year.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. Holmes, you got any comment? Hold up, guys, hold up, guys, hold up, Mr. Holmes. Hey, so the team granddaddy's over here, Jackson's granddaddy, just happens to be our city manager. And so we get a report every week about what goes on in the games. And so for commissioners who haven't met you, they feel like they know you. Because we get a report every week and he's probably as excited as you guys are. So before we leave, we talked a little bit about two things. So hard work and teamwork. So let me get a hard work and teamwork before we leave, hard work. Teamwork. Hard work. Teamwork. Congratulations, guys. No. These meetings will never be the same. Let's take a, let's take a two-minute break so we can clear out. Right. Next up. We back on? We're gonna go ahead and reconvene. Next up is our proclamation for hospice and palliative care month, November twenty twenty-one. Do we have our representatives from hospice here? Come on up. And the proclamation reads as follows.
Whereas home care, palliative care, and hospice services provide for an individual's health and social needs across the continuum of life. Serving expecting mothers, infants, childrens, adults, individuals with disabilities, the elderly, and providing love, comfort, and support at the end of life. And whereas these high-quality care services are delivered by an interdisciplinary team of skilled professionals and trained volunteers, including physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselors, home health aides, virtual care providers, and more. And whereas each year hospice saves Medicare more than $2 billion while providing solutions for physicians' care to patients and comfort to families. Research indicates that timely access to hospice and palliative care can decrease hospitalizations and emergency room visits and increase the quality of life for patients and family caregivers. And whereas home care, palliative care, and hospice enable Florida citizens to receive quality health and social services in their own home surrounded by family and friends. These services support families by easing the caregiver burden and helping to avoid the cost of institutional care. And whereas home care, palliative care, and hospice build upon a strong tradition of compassion and strive to keep families together while preserving an individual's independence and dignity in the comfort of his or her home. Now therefore, I, Terrell O'Hill, mayor of the city of Palatka, together with members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim November twenty twenty-one as Home Care, Hospice, and Palliative Care Month in the city of Palatka. And we encourage our citizens to learn more about the options of care and to share their wishes with their family, their loved ones, and their healthcare professionals. I witness where I am going to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Palatka this eighteenth day of November in the year of our Lord two thousand and twenty-one.
So move. Motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye. Close motion carries unanimously. Let's give a round of applause.
Thank you, and I do appreciate the opportunity again to come this year and receive a proclamation on behalf of Haven Hospice. We do have some representatives in the audience too. I would like to point out. Look at him. He's like, Mr. Martinez.
Manny Martinez.
Mr. McLean and our newest community advisory board, Mr. Shaw. So I thank them for their support and helping our, our organization. And I appreciate the opportunity again to come and accept the proclamation.
Thank you, and thank you gentlemen for serving.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Next up is our Thanksgiving proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas on Thanksgiving Day, we remember with reverence and gratitude the bountiful blessings afforded to us by our Creator. And we recommit to sharing in a spirit of Thanksgiving and generosity with our friends, neighbors, and families. And whereas nearly four centuries ago, determined individuals with the hopeful vision of a more prosperous life and an abundance of opportunities made a pilgrim midge to a distant land. These pilgrims embarked on their journey across the Atlantic Ocean at great personal risk, facing unforeseen trials and tribulations and unforetold hardships during their passage. After their arrival in the New World, a harsh and deadly winter took the lives of nearly half of their population. Those who survived remained unwavering in their faith and foresight of a future rich with liberty and freedom. Enduring every impediment as they established one of our nation's first settlements. Through God's divine providence, a meaning relationship was forged with the Wampanoag tribe. And through their unwavering resolve and resilience, the pilgrims enjoyed a bountiful harvest the following year. The celebration of this harvest lasted three days and saw the pilgrims and the Wampanoag seated together at the table of friendship and unity. That first Thanksgiving provided an enduring symbol of gratitude that is uniquely sewn into the fabric of our American spirit. And whereas since the first settlers to call our country home landed on American shores, we have been defined by our resilience and propensity to show gratitude even in the face of greatest adversity, always remembering the blessings we have been given in spite of the hardships we endure. This Thanksgiving, as we pause and acknowledge those who will have empty seats at their table, we ask the Creator to watch over our service members, especially those whose selfless commitment to serving our country and defending our sacred liberty has called them to duty overseas during the holiday season. We also pray for our law enforcement officials and first responders as they carry out their duties to protect and serve our communities. As a community, we owe adept of gratitude to both those who take an oath to safeguard us in our way of life as well as to their families, and we salute them for their measurable sacrifices. And whereas in the midst of all the chaotic events in our nation and around the world, we are reminded that security and liberty continue in our nation only because of the Creator's loving care. United together as one people in gratitude for the freedoms and prosperity that thrive across our land, we ask the Creator for protection and wisdom and for opportunities this Thanksgiving to share with others some measure of what we've been so provincially received. And whereas let us give thanks to our Creator for our countless blessings we enjoy. We are able to wake each morning and exercise the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, to worship freely and openly, and to go through each day without fear for our lives. And whereas furthermore, with freedom comes the responsibility for obedience to God and His commands. And we bend our knees to ask the Creator to revive and uphold godliness in the lives of men and women in our nation and community. With grateful hearts, we praise God for His long suffering, His kindness, His mercy, and His goodness. Now therefore, I, Terrell O'Hill, mayor of the city of Palatka, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one as Thanksgiving Day in the city of Palatka. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Palatka this eighteenth day of November in the year of our Lord two thousand and twenty-one.
So move. Motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose motion carries unanimously. We're gonna give our Thanksgiving proclamation to our city attorney, Valeria Thomas. We are truly grateful and thankful in and out of season and through difficult times. So again, thank you very much for all you do. And we want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Let's give a round of applause. Next up is public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone here wishing to speak during public comment, you can fill out a yellow speaker's card, which is located to my left in the back of the room just before the door. If you are in Zoom land, you can dial three eight six three two nine zero one hundred extension zero, and your comments will be logged. We have a have a few people who are here for general public comment. If you're here for a specific item, please mark the item on the agenda that you wish to speak about. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. First up, under general public comment, Mr. Sam Carr. As you address the podium, as you come forward to the podium, please give your name and address for the record so that we'll have that information.
And my address is one oh eight Riverside Drive, Setsumah, Florida. And so I'm here today to report on our two thousand and twenty-one Bartram Frolic on the St. John's, which occurred November the first through the fifth on the riverfront. And I want to extend a great thank you to the city of Palatka and especially to Eddie, Aaron, Toby, and Jermaine and Jason for making it happen for us. We invited eight hundred second grade students and teachers to participate in the twenty thousand, two thousand twenty-one edition of the frolic. And it was combined effort from the Putnam County School District, the Bartram Trail Society of Florida, St. John's Riverkeeper, and of course, the St. John's River Center as our host. We had a hundred and thirty people on Monday. We had a hundred and fifty on Tuesday. We had a hundred and forty again on Wednesday. Thursday was a hundred and fifty. And Friday we had to cancel. Remember that storm came through? It was really bad. So, so we got wise and canceled that thing. Since the Bartram Trail Society began doing this in two thousand and seventeen, we have brought two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine second graders to the riverfront here in Palatka. We put every single one of them. Thank you. We put every single one of them in, in the pride of Palatka. And we estimate that over half of the students had never been on a boat on the St. John's River before. So this was their first exposure to the St. John's. And as successful as it's been, the Putnam County School District has incorporated the, the passport to the past and the, the education process that we present to the kids as part of their second grade curriculum. And they're working on a similar deal with the fifth graders. So we'll be doing something not only for second grade, but for the fifth grade as well in future, future years. And the, the passport to the past, which I gave you all a copy of it, is part of the curriculum. It has all been part of the department, the school department's education standards and, and all. We have a great time this year. The kids were better behaved than usual, and I don't know why. But, but we just didn't have any problems at all. We appreciate the city accommodating us. We, we didn't use the river center. We were outside of the river center the entire time, and we set up our tents. We did use the river center for storage after the thing was over with. But a frolicking great time was had by all, and we had a wonderful time doing it. So thank you for the city for, for participating with us. Okay.
Next up, Ms. Joyce Williams.
My name is Joyce Williams. Address fifteen twenty-three Oak Street. And we were back with the sewer problem. I gave the
City manager.
Yes, my phone number and name, but I haven't gotten a phone call yet of what's gonna happen if we're gonna check on what's going on and what need to happen. But far as the house is concerned, I know last year, at the end of the year, we had all our plumbing up under the house. The old stuff was removed and put all new plumbing. So it's not coming from my house. And I would like to know, you know, that I was told that from one of the city workers when he came out to work, that they had never changed the sewer line on that street. And that's not the only house. It's another young lady that was here the last time when I was here. And she lived right behind Reverend Flax's house. Toya. And she was saying that she's having the same problem of stuff coming up in her sink and in her bathroom.
I spoke to him.
And so I, I don't know, you know, how long we have to wait until they start working to at least and see if they have a line down there. So when they were working that day, when I had to call them to come out and clean the thing out in the middle of the road and all. Well, I called one of your commissioners, Commissioner Jones, to come out to see for himself. This is what we have to go through. So I'm hoping that something can be done because no one wants to, you know, go through this all the time. It's not happening now right at the moment because they've cleaned it out. And this time they bought two big trucks instead of one to be on Fifteenth Street and on Sixteenth Street, which I guess they should have been doing all along. But something is not right with the line. I don't know if there's a line there. It's just, you know, it's broken or whatever. So I just wanted to let them know that I will be coming up and, you know, voicing my opinion on what needs to all they have to do is go out there and see what's going on in the line.
We appreciate you coming and updating us.
All right.
Mr. Holmes, you got any update for us?
No, I apologize. I called the other, I was trying to lay it back and was told that the problem had resolved itself, but I should have called the other to eventually talk to someone on her side. But I'll be in touch with you tomorrow.
Okay.
They were two in the same area that came up and made the problem. I called the other one. Problem had resolved itself. She didn't have a problem in common.
Okay. And so can we at least maybe get an update as to what the progress is or if there's a diagnosis? In that way.
The person that I have there who's giving there, he's a vendor, and I know he calls me about anything that happens in that park, in that situation.
So we've, we've, so we've personally driven by to look at it. But we'll make sure that someone actually communicates with you so they can actually get there. So. For anyone else for general public comment, all my other cards are for specific items on the agenda. If there is no one else for general public comment at this time, we'll go ahead and close.
Mayor, I believe there was one public comment for the consent agenda.
There is one for the consent agenda. We're not there yet. We'll close general public comment, and we will move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda is item five. We have items A through O on the consent agenda. Are there any items that you wish to have removed from the consent agenda at this time? I have a couple. Do you have any items that you wish to have removed? Twenty twenty-one, one sixty-five. And twenty twenty-one, one six seven. One six seven, D and F? Any others? I've got Jay. I have a card for Jay. And I also want us to remove Ian. Are there any other items on the consent agenda at this time?
I'll make a motion that we accept the agenda, I mean, the consent agenda as it is excluding D, F, J, and N.
Are you pulling J?
Yes. There's a motion on the floor and a second to accept the consent agenda as written minus items D, F, J, and N. Is it, there was, there was a second, my commissioner, my castle. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item D, resolution twenty twenty-one, one six five, authorizing the mayor and interim city clerk to execute an attest construction agreement with the market construction and the amount of ninety thousand dollars for the construction of lighting improvements to existing hangers at the Palatka Municipal Airport.
The resolution reads as follows. The resolution of the city of Palatka, Florida, authorizing the mayor and interim city clerk to execute an attaster construction agreement with the mayor construction company in the amount of ninety thousand for the construction of lighting improvements to existing hangers at the Palatka Municipal Airport providing for governor's heirs.
So move. Second. Motion on the floor in a second. Can I have Mr. Griffith or Ms. Tucker? You want to speak to this project or Mr. Yu? Mr. Yu is here. He can speak to it.
Yes, or may I? This is a, a project to install LED lighting on the outside, the remaining hangers that do not have LED lighting on the east end of the hanger. And then LED lighting on as many of the remaining T hangers that do not have very good lighting. The lighting inside the T hangers is old. Incon, fluorescent bulbs. It just does not illuminate very well. And I don't know if you've seen the LED lighting on the outside of the hanger, but it does provide very, very good lighting. And it's just a project that's needed to have been done for quite a long time.
Any questions as it pertains to the project? Any other questions?
Mr. Yu also in the tune of ninety thousand dollars. You're gonna replace that lighting? Excuse me. Excuse me. And then you have the resolution twenty twenty-one, six seven, where we have another vendor with similar project or whatever. The entire project is ninety one thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. That's the construction service that's related to a hanger project. Is that the same?
Construction service is the administrative fee for the engineering firm that helped design the lighting and, and, and perform the bid process for us. That's not another company. It's our engineering and architectural firm, Pass Rail Associates. That's their administrative management fee, if you will, for managing the project, soliciting bids.
So they're charging us ninety one thousand?
Not ten. That's, that's ten for, for the
Two different things.
The lighting is ninety and their fee is ten.
Project you're looking at is the, the, the second one you're looking at relates to six T hangers.
That's why that is a bit confusing because it is ninety thousand for the same
Two different T hanger projects.
T hanger project, not
Yeah.
Right. That's, yeah, because I, okay, but I'm asking a question.
So the lights are ninety thousand. So, so for clarity, lights are ninety thousand. Ten thousand is for the fees to facilitate the funding for the lights. For the project, fulfilling the project from the engineering firm. But the other one that you're looking at, which is F, what you pulled from the agenda, that's a totally separate project, and that's the fee to bill six T hangers for the, the administrative cost to build that, to do with that project. Those are two separate projects. You have existing T hangers, and then you have new T hangers being built.
I got you. The question still remains, is ninety one thousand to build T hanger? And then ninety thousand just to put lights on the T hanger?
Not just to build them, to design, to do all the other stuff that goes along with it. So it's different.
They're not building. That's a lot of money.
And there's, and there's a lot of wiring, changing out components and conduit work that goes with upgrading the old, old antiquated lighting.
On the new, the new, it does too. Let's, let's stick to
Yeah. Lighting only. I've gotten the forty, forty, oh yeah, forty. Forty on the inside, if not more. I don't know the exact number.
Which that was a clear to state it here. So you understand my confusion on that?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right. Over my question. Absolutely. Alright. Over my question.
Okay. So let's make sure we stay on B and D is the ninety thousand dollars, which is the one that was pulled for for lighting, for changing lighting over to LED for the existing T hangers. And so with that in place, there's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Question.
Of course, it's called all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item F, resolution twenty twenty-one, one six-seven, authorizing mayor and interim city clerk to execute an attest work order number ninety twenty-one, number twenty-one dash six-five R one with pass for an association amount of ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars for construction services related to pending six unit project at the Polackamino Airport.
Thank you, Mayor. A resolution of the city, question of the city of Polack, Florida, moving work order to me on G sixty-five, one one, series associates LLC to provide construction support services for a six unit T hanger project at the Polackamino Airport providing for governor's heirs.
So move. There's a motion on the floor in a second. Any further discussion on this motion? I think it's just for the record, I'll indicate that this project is a one million, ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollar project. Um, so you're talking a construction cost of less than ten percent.
That's G.
Yes, G. No, 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 I'm just, I'm just, I'm just speaking on the cost of the project in total, not what we approve. We've already approved G. But just so you know what the total cost of the project is for the six hangers. So any further questions on this item or any further discussion? We've already had our motion in our second on this item. We have a motion second on this.
Yep.
No other questions on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item J of the agendas, adopt resolution twenty twenty-one, R one seven-one, accepting rankings and responses for our Q twenty twenty-one dash one eight lobbyist services for the city of Polack. Authorizing the city manager to begin contract negotiations. Ms. Krantz.
Thank you, Mayor. A resolution of the city of Polack, confirming the ranking of lobbyists from qualifications received in response to city of Polack or Q twenty twenty-one dash eighteen lobbyist services for the city of Polack, Florida, and authorizing contract negotiations with the top rank respondent for getting for governor's heirs.
So there's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there a second on this motion? Second discussion purposes. Mr. Holmes, can you, um, just give us a breakdown of what took place? We have one speaker on this item.
Yes. Uh, we have the responses to the our Q and that. Thank myself. Mr. Griffith. Review the responses which were fairly relentless and ranked them based upon criteria that you see. And I think that authority of the ranking or difference in the ranking was based upon the, um, that we had had and also the they were, they were listed in the packets as being the ones who did some services for the city. So that was our ranking.
And so, so there were two respondents and that was our current lobbyist, Smith, Ryan and Myers. And also a former lobbyist, which was Becker and Poliakoff. Does any one of those lobbying, which one of those lobbying firms does do both of them provide federal lobbying services?
I can't honestly tell you about this, Brian. I know that Becker and Poliakoff do. Basically, we lean heavily on our prior experience with the two firms without getting into more detail and services we've got kind of the present firm. And that, I think, uh, in talking to the committee, was the predominant factor that we looked at.
I know, um, and since we've gotten the new lobbying firm, that we've had problems. Um, more specifically when we're in Tallahassee, uh, for lobbying days, that they have not necessarily been available. Or, um, we've had to look for them on several occasions. Um, and I don't feel as our lobbyists that we should have to look for them. They should have to look for us and have a plan ready for us. And I know this is not the first time. This is actually a few times that we've had that issue with them.
I have no knowledge of that. All I can say is that from staff's perspective, the information staff's perspective, the contact, communication, info, type of pressure on
I have staff share the same concern with Commissioner Campbell. I remember the last time we were there together. It was not a good look or a good feel not having our lobbyists there to support us. Luckily, we were able to go in there with our own experience and try to do the best we can, but I, I can, I share the same concern that Commissioner Campbell does.
And during rural county days and, and there was other times where where we didn't get the response that we thought we should have gotten, uh, the communication in the relationship. Um, that, that goes a long ways, uh, as well. So I had a bit of a concern with, with, you know, just a relationship, networking, talking, keeping us up to date on different things of that nature. So.
And I, and I, and I think along those same lines, um, I, I was there when we got stood up a couple of times, uh, and the date and the, the appointment got pushed out from lunchtime to really the next day. And it didn't get followed up that day. I think at the end of the day, we've gotten some appropriations. Those appropriations were well overdue based upon what was in place. Uh, I think the other piece of it is, and the one thing that I look at is, um, you know, we, we get, we got the three and a half million dollar grant from DEP. Um, but when you look at what we receive, I mean, we like, I just got ten million for a very similar project. The money was fluid coming through, so I don't necessarily know, um, how much do we put in place for that? I don't discredit what Smith, Ryan has done, but I, I do think that some of the appropriations that we had in place um, were just very valuable projects that were going to get funded regardless. When we brought Becker Poliakoff on the first time and when we talk about the services, um, they came in, in the middle of session. When we first started, we were well within two session when they had the first year. The second year came up and that was the year that all the water projects got pulled and no one got funding, which was the major consideration that we had. So the following year, we knew that there was a significant amount of slush money and, and water projects would get funded and that's when we started with the new company. Um, and that's when we saw the transition in place. So, um, and I, and I guess I would dare to say I've probably from the, from the, you know, from the Tallahassee side, I've probably visited Tallahassee as much as anybody. And I can quite honestly tell you the relationship with the lobbying firm that we have currently isn't a bad relationship. I think Ms. Hurley has done a good job, but I don't think Ms. Hurley has cultivated a relationship whatsoever with this commission and tried to keep the commission apprised of what's in place to the extent that I had to introduce commissioners to the lobby so they'd know who she was. And I, I think that's difficult. I, I wholeheartedly believe that, that as we look at this, the challenge we have right now is that we have a ten thousand person population in the city of Polack. Slightly over based upon census count, even though there was a decline in population based on census. But it wasn't a decline significant enough to put us in a position where we get real facilities funding. The threshold is the biggest obstacle we have to overcome. If in fact, we are able to change that and that's what was being worked on by Becker and Poliakoff, particularly with the emphasis on infrastructure from, from DC right now and the new infrastructure bill that's put in place is the perfect time for Polack to be able to deal with some of the issues as it relates to INI uh, with our sanitary sewer, um, to be able to, to deal with in larger quantities and have opportunities to get funding that will surpass some of the funding that we've got on the state level. And I understand, um, you know, the, the unspoken partisan politics avenues that take place in, in state versus federal politics, but the reality is the federal dollars are going a lot further than state dollars are going these days. And I just believe that it's an opportunity for us to really focus on what our, our major initiative is, which is to try to make sure that we can deal with some of these infrastructure issues without having to use state revolving loan funds where the request for the funding is going to exceed what we're typically get from a budget appropriations on the state level. And so I would rather have a firm that gets state and that can do state and federal lobbying together than to have a firm that can only do state lobbying. And at worst case scenario, use two firms, one that does state lobbying and one that does federal lobbying. Um, but I don't think that us ignoring the fact that federal lobbying is available from, you know, a firm that has a national reputation, um, and probably represents six thousand or so, um, associations throughout and just as many, um, municipalities as you know, as Smith, Brian is really the answer. And so we, we still, to this day, every time we do these contracts, we never give credit for the fact that someone does state and federal lobbying. We only give credit for the state lobbying side, and I think we miss an important piece of the puzzle for Polack. So any other comments from the commission before I go to the speaker card? And I don't know if we have Ms. Hurley or anyone from Smith, Brian um, here as well, and I'll afford the same opportunity. Um, Yolanda Cash Jackson filled out a speaker's card for this item and I'll let her come up at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, listeners, Yolanda Cash, back to Becker. Um, thank you.
It could be your phone. It could be your phone.
Yeah, definitely the magnet personality. I'll back over this way. Is that better?
Speaking loud, I do.
Yeah, just push it down. Push it over there. You can go ahead.
There you go. Thank you so much. But anyway, Yolanda Cash Jackson, one East Proud Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. Just want to thank you for the opportunity to, um, speak to you. Um, just briefly to thank you for the opportunity to apply. And we were here before, um, on, to one of a pure bono basis, because one of the things that I've learned in twenty-two years that I've been doing this job, advocating on behalf of, um, big, big people, advocating, we have small cities, we represent West Park, which is about your size. I've done work for Opelika, a little bit bigger than you. But one of the things that we really enjoy, I really enjoy, is the opportunity to allow you to have an opportunity. So we did apply. We do represent local, state and federal. When I started with the firm, we were at, uh, with one person. And then I joined and we build that practice now to a, a national, uh, practice of federal, state and local, including, uh, Republicans, Democrats, Black, White, Hispanic. We are very, very diverse in our representation. But I did want to spend just one second on, um, the federal piece. And, and to your point, Mr. Mayor, uh, an opportunity that may not come again. Uh, we have, uh, just spent a lot of time going through the infrastructure bill and in spite of the fact that you're not an entitled city, uh, there are some, uh, opportunities that you should not miss broadband, uh, infrastructure, safety, uh, transportation. Uh, those are very, very important and does not matter your size. The other reason is earmarks you back. Earmarks you back. And not everybody, uh, in the Florida delegation uses earmarks, but I can tell you that we've used them, uh, for some of the municipalities that have not had an opportunity to get other funding. Then I want to just briefly, uh, touch on infrastructure at the state level. Infrastructure dollars are passed through from the federal, from the federal, uh, government and you have to watch. The Office of Economic Opportunity is going to have millions and millions and millions of dollars for, uh, infrastructure workforce, uh, projects. One thing that happened last, uh, session, and then I'll take my seat, is that thirty million dollars was put aside just for African-American cultural projects. And that was a federal pass through. And so if you have not applied, that, uh, opportunity is, uh, begins November thirtieth. And so, you know, those are kind of opportunities. Also, we have a hundred million dollars, uh, resiliency fund. We met with the resiliency people yesterday. And they want you to apply to some of those big projects. So opportunities abound. I can tell you that I'm personally committed, uh, to cities like Polack. And would love for the opportunity to represent you, uh, at the federal level and hope you will consider to add that as a part of your representation. Having the, um, relationship between, uh, state and federal is very important. We talk all the time. We understand what's going on. I don't do federal, but I can talk federal. And that's because we talk, uh, all the time about what's good for our clients. With that, I'll entertain any question.
Questions from the commission?
Well, I just want, um, just thank her for, you know, for being, uh, for, for applying. And as you know, we have had a relationship before with you and, um, our first term during twenty fifteen to uh, well, we, we've had a previous relationship and that went well. So we appreciate you walking side by side with us. And, uh, and working on a number of our priorities and initiatives and, um, look forward to working with you going forward.
I too echo the same. Um, just seeing what we've had before, what we have now, um, nothing compares. Um, when we were in Tallahassee, you were there when we were in Washington DC, our representative, representative from the firm was there. And again, with what we have now, maybe it's just me personally, I have a bad taste because even with the downfall, no one reached out to apologize. Um, and I just don't, I just, I'm not I'm not, with, with who we have now, I'm just not pleased. And I just, I'm not pleased, but thank you so much for, um, coming back. Cause most people say, once you left, well, I'm not coming back. But the mere fact that you are back speaks volumes to who you are and who the company is and what you all can do for Polack. So thank you so much.
And to piggyback off Commissioner Campbell, I thank you too for coming back and applying. And when I first got on the commission, I met you and I appreciate the communication and the relationship that we established. So again, thanks.
Mr. Jones, you got anything?
I wasn't here at the time. I didn't have my experience, so I don't have any comments at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Again, thank you. Um, thank you for your comments. If Ms. Hurley or a representative from Smith, Brian is on, we'll give them the same opportunity to speak. Seeing no one on there, um, I, I don't think the I think Smith, and I'll say, I think Smith, Brian did a good job, um, with what they did, um, during their, during their time of representing the city over the last couple of years. I think they've done a, a good job. I, I don't necessarily think they've done a good job of facilitating the relationships necessary to move forward. And I don't think they provide a part of the services that we need, I think, as we begin to really start to move forward and take advantage of, of, of really where we are from the federal government side and what our true needs are as an older city with aging infrastructure. And so I, I think that's critical. And so, um, my recommendation to this commission, and it seems as though, uh, with the comments, there are some concerns about the relationship, is that, um, Becker Poliakoff be ranked number one, that we move into contract negotiation with Becker Poliakoff as opposed to Smith, Brian.
Does that, does that need to come before a form of a motion? I know there's something currently on the table for discussion purposes.
Well, that was just
Now, the recommendation is, so right now there's a motion on the floor in a second to accept, to, to accept the recommendation as printed on the agenda with Smith, Brian first and Becker Poliakoff second. Um, and so if that's the motion and there is no one readiness, we'll move forward. Who made that motion?
Commissioner, my castle.
It wasn't the gospel made the motion. Is that still your motion? If it's not your motion, you want to withdraw your motion at this time? And the second, who made, I need a second to also be amenable to, the second to be amenable to who made commissioner, who made the second? You made the second? Who made the second on the
I have Commissioner Campbell.
Campbell, you're listed as making the second on the motion. Are you okay with the withdrawal of the motion?
I am.
Okay. So that motion is withdrawn at this time. I'll entertain a new motion.
I'll make them, uh, I would like to make a motion that we go with Becker and Poliakoff as our lobbying firm second.
And that's ranking Smith, um, Brian, Smith, Brian. And that's ranking Smith, um Bryant, Smith Bryan, number two?
Yes.
So that's, there's a motion on the floor, there's a second by Commissioner Bore. Is there any further discussion from the commission at this time?
Question?
Questions called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. So, welcome back. Thank you. Next up is item in on the agenda, which is to approve budget transfer in a better place funds for the transportation. For the transportation hub project. And Mr. Griffith, you want to take item in? And Ms. Ms. Shank, you guys can double team that.
So, part of the budget adoption, this project was not rolled forward, therefore the funding went down into reserves. What you have in front of you is for the reserve, um, sorry, the project balance to be pulled from reserves and put back into the project account.
So as we pull the project up, can you give the scope of the project, Mr. Griffith? So um the commission will understand what they're approving and also where we are because dirt is already moving on the project.
Yeah, so this project um is intended to accomplish a couple of things. Uh, first is from the purpose, uh perspective of the water management district is a nutrient reduction project. So we'll be converting some asphalt parking lot to perviable papers. Um, it's also associated with some paper improvements, intersection enhancements on St. John's Avenue. There is a reconfiguration of the lots, uh and we are paving the portion of the dirt lot that would be to the south of the platform right now. Uh, you probably know it is the area close to the caboose. Um, so we'll be improving that area, there'll be some new landscaping, some new signage, and we're also improving the chambers parking lot at the same time.
Any questions from the commission?
Do you have an exhibit some for the project as it's?
Not with me, sir, but I do have one I can send out.
I have a question as well, uh, I've seen two renditions of the project. And one that I seen, I visualize it uh with no entrance on the main street. Main street, you used to go in and drive into the Price Martin Center and there was another exit closer to the chamber. The way it looks now and it's constructed, it's sort of like boxes in the, the area and frankly, I just don't like it. Uh, for number one, and uh your explanation to me is verbally was. It's going to be more parking, obviously, it's going to be more parking because you just said that you're going to make parking by the chamber. But as it relates to the main parking lot of the Price Martin, uh, it seems like cuts off the rest of the neighborhood and that community over there. And, and that don't sit well with me. Um, and I know on these projects, you pretty much the project manager, I think some of those things. Um, I think Commissioner Borne is asking to look at it now, we need to see that stuff before being constructed, some of the stuff is going up. And I, I don't think we have uh as much input as we need to have. Uh, so that's what I wanted to say, and I, I really want us to review that part of it.
Well, is, I don't think it's completed yet, so um, you know, in terms of point of work is, you know. If it's going, if it's going, maybe ingress, ingress, that's what, that's what we're saying, the box in, the ingress, ingress. I think we need to take a look at that and see what that actually does and maybe kind of collaborate and try to get a little bit of better understanding because. When we're voting on things and we just get something handed to us and, and the commission is approving something that it had no voice in. Um, as it relates to how it sits now in the new configuration. So I think um that's a great point that we've been made and we, we got here a little bit more of. At least understand how these projects is coming along and what, what, you know, what's going, what's going to happen from initiation to completion. So that's just where I'm at.
So I, I'll say this, um, the commission actually approved this project, it was two thousand eighteen.
It's been before the commission numerous times, be it through the planning phase, be it, uh, be it the award of the construction contract to the contractor.
Right, was it, was the rendition, was the owner that closed, closed at that time, did we say, oh, wait, we got ingress, egress now. We're closing this all to where now, from an access standpoint, that's what I'm saying.
Commissioner, if your question is, has the commission formally taken action on adopting a set of plans, no.
Okay.
I, I just, I'm sorry.
No.
I'm sorry if I'm asking um maybe a crazy question. Um, I do know that we've asked several times for things to be presented to us in a timely manner, but I do have to say that. I'm asking if we want it uh brought before us in an open forum on the dais, I'm quite sure we, we like that. But I do have meetings where I meet with the city manager um quite often. Um, I'm hoping that everyone else does and he tries to bring a lot of things to my attention um at that time. So are we asking for these issues to be brought in excess of the meetings that I hope that we're having with the city manager one-on-one as well as other staff members?
I think one of the big things for, I think one of the big things for me is if, and we've talked about a little bit. When this, when the scope of the project changes or there's a snag that changes what conceptually has been presented. And it's more than, you know, um, what you're going to get on a regular basis. So for example, a cutout home in the historic district or something to that effect. At least, you know, kind of saying, hey, this is kind of the hiccup that's come up in this, as, as projects come about. Because for example, you, you have some project, you never know what's going to happen until you start turning into dirt. And once the project starts going on, you never know what you're going to run into, but if you run into something major, at least saying, you know, having that heads up which says. Hey, we may not be able to do this phase of the project based upon what's in place, I think. From the commission's standpoint, it's, you know, as we do the project updates, it gives, it, it keeps you from being caught off guard. I think the ingress egress piece of this one, um, you don't see it. Conceptually, you see it on paper, but it doesn't, it's not the same until you see what's in place. And I think, um, I think overall, we just need to work more on, I think we work more on just getting. Getting, you know, just getting the, the, the better, another update system in place. So when we find issues where we can't necessarily, or you got to make adjustments on the fly, and I think that happens with the projects. So if it's whether you can't do a part of the paving project as a part of what's going on. Then you come back and we come back and say, at least give that heads up. And so I think staff does the best they can do to make certain adjustments that are there and they use their best judgment in doing those things. But I, I think sometimes, some of those, you know, when it comes up and it's a major issue which may, you know, take out a component of the project. At least saying, hey, this is what we discovered throughout, and sometimes you don't have enough time to do. But in most cases, if you do have the availability to do it, then it needs to be something that comes before the commission.
And if I may, I can say that um Jonathan and the city manager does reach out. Um, I know not about everything and maybe not about this, and I don't know how they communicate with the other commissioners, but I can say that they try. To reach out when changes happen and they inform me, just speaking with my experience.
Accountability, and if something change up, I, as a commissioner, I want to know. Uh, when the public ask, I want to be informed and I should be able to get that from here and not take another meeting of, you know, or anything of that nature. And if it's not told to me prior, this is where it's going to come out and you guys, I think, know that by now. Um, not only that, and it's expectations of a project, um, because. Even the uh Lowe's project and it was community project and we're very grateful and thankful for it. However, we saw rendition and we got input from the commissioners of how we wanted to look. It don't look anything like that at this point. Yes, and so absolutely, we, we, we're held accountable for what goes on, they're not going to go to Jonathan, they're going to ask the commission. Well, what do you have, have going on here, uh, and things of that nature. So I just, I want to uh just force my displeasure of it. And maybe, like, we changed a lot of stuff during, like you said, we kind of flew it, so maybe it could be changed. Maybe we could sit down and look at it and see, is it logical to, to make an entrance in that, that direction? Especially when you're going to add something on the north end of that, that, that transportation hub as well. So you want, want more than one entrance into that facility.
Any other comments from the commission? So as it relates to this project, we still have to fund it.
That is correct, you've actually already awarded.
And you have. No, no, it's, so the, the funding went into the reserves, it was budgeted and then the funding went into the reserve, so it has to be pulled back out, that's the purpose of the item on here. And so at this point, uh, I think regardless of the concerns are there, and it's an opportunity to look at those and see. If we can meet the concerns of the commission voice forward at this time, but we still got a funding project. So um with that being said. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve?
I said, I said an emotion.
It's a motion to approve the budget transfer in better place, there's a second on the floor by Commissioner Jones, any further discussions? Questions called, all in favor say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously.
So, can I say something?
Sure.
Even with that approving that project, we don't want to impede it, I don't want to impede it personally. I don't want to make mention of something that I'm displeased with, that we don't follow up on. So um, city manager, could, at some point, we meet again and kind of discuss that. Uh, amending that plan because change orders come all the time, so I know things change, so that's one of the things I think we should consider.
This project was approved before, uh, before she ever became city manager and city attorney. Design approval project, but um I do know that. Understanding that some, some circumstances on site resulted in some changes. And just to, I guess, for purposes of, of thought, you know, uh, sometimes it's not possible to wait till the next commission meeting to make a decision about how. Possess, you know, receive when you do confront issues that were unanticipated, but having said that. We'll uh definitely be talking to see what kind of, I don't know where we are in the design phase, I don't know how big a uh change order would require to. To re uh establish an entrance off of, of what you're calling the main street entrance, but certainly.
Some things can't wait to the next commission, but some things can be sent out via email, um, which alerts us. And again, everybody know, I'm probably one of the commissioners that's, that's least of a bother. But again, of course, it can't wait to the next commission meeting, but again, we all have access to email and just a general courtesy email as you do often. Um, I think when we have changes of that magnitude being notified in some way, um, shape or fashion. So that would be my recommendation, it doesn't have to wait till the next commission meeting to be communicated properly.
I'll, I'll just tell you this, in all fairness to Mr. Griffith and his team. This project has had, and I asked a question just the other day in it, because I, I had a question about the scope of the project as a whole. And some of the things that were um, that were depicted in the airs. Video characterization of the development of the area and um. And, and he disclosed some challenges that he had that far beyond his control and he did a good job of adjusting with what he had in place. And so I, I, this is in no way from me, I, I think it's, it's in no way. Of necessarily about the adjustment to this project. Uh, the concern with ingress and egress is, is something different than I had on this project. And, and I think it's a valid concern, but I think the biggest concern is it's just as we start to move processes along. There's another, this is an opportunity for us as we move forward. Um, in the back of the room, we've got Ms. Canoe. Um, who's, who's come on and agreed to, to do some work with us as a project manager, has a, a tremendous history as well. And I think um when you, you basically have a person who takes on multiple positions as, as a project manager. It's hard, it's hard to, to, to really be able to communicate everything everywhere. And so I, I think for this particular project, I will say that Mr. Griffith has done, uh, has made some adjustments and he found some. Some cans filled with worms and he did what he could do with those and trying to clean up prior, prior deficiencies. And so um I would invite any commissioner to talk to him to get a better idea of what those worms had in the can.
But by no means this is an, an attack on Jonathan or anything like that, it's just that the commission wasn't a, a, a praise of. Uh, some of the changes and it seemed to be, you know, a bigger change. So Jonathan does an excellent job for the city, there's no um way that we're up here. Um, saying anything negative in that respect. All that was communicated was that the ingress egress seems like it's a bigger change. So it's, let's not make this a bigger issue than it really is, because there's no issue out of that. Man Jonathan for the job that he done, the community city manager for the job that he does, we communicate very well. I communicate with the city manager on a regular basis as well as I do with Jonathan, but again, if that was a mess. We, we're going to, we're going to go back and revisit it and we're going to keep moving.
I mean, this is an opportunity. Mayor, can I say something?
We're prospering here. We, we're here for, we're, it's, it's always a seven, it's always a day on and it never be off.
Me, I work continuously in tires.
What is it? It's an opportunity for.
So just so you know, this is constructive, we appreciate it, uh, but do be advised, the conceptual plan.
Thanks, thank you, sir.
Next up. New opportunities. Direction as to a workshop concerning the city to engage in long-term land leases at the Palacanis Airport for private hangar development, item number six.
So, uh, as you know, you're airport advisor for the monthly and considers different issues that affect the airport. Uh, for several months now, uh, there have been talk about whether or not the city would be going to. Energy, private land leases, land leases meaning. The land and the less he would then build or construct the hangar improvements. Have to work out length of the other lease and restrictions on the use of the hangar, but the point being that. Uh, it would be an opportunity or it would provide for hangers. Um, of a little bit larger size of what we normally build that would be constructed with uh private funds would use by those. So they, the advisory board, together with uh several associates, have been looking at uh. Locations where that might feasibly occur, um, and uh, and some terms. And they've come up with some conceptuals and then, as you know, consult with your decision as to whether we engage in that kind of a concept. So my understanding is that they're saying that to you tonight for direction as to whether you wish to perform with this or. Uh, or what your feelings are about the concept of allowing private hangers uh on the, on the airport pursuant to land lease. That's as a, as a background.
I don't know if it's better or louder.
Thank you, we want to thank you on behalf of the airport advisory board uh for the privilege of serving you, each one of you. And uh for the privilege of serving our city and our aviation community as well as our county. And we take it very seriously, um, Mr. McLean and Ms. Jones are both here, but also on the um airport advisory board and. And we take it very seriously, the privilege of helping with ideas and uh seasoned aviation directives to recommend to y'all what we think.
to recommend to y'all what we think. And we have waited for probably a dozen years for this day, when we can see our airport take a step from being just a private airport with private planes to a corporate world. And we've, thanks to Andrew and Past Row and Associates, we've had a lot of help in in rationalizing this for a dozen years, really. And we finally got to the day when we can see step one. And Mr. Valancourt is here tonight, and I think he spoke to us a few months ago. And we would like to see him take spot number one or two on the right up there and start moving forward. And from a very generalization view, this would mean about $5,000 of a year of income to the airport, to the city, as well as zero cost associated basically with us starting it because the hangar will be built by private funds. He's offered to help with the infrastructure and Valancourt, of course, is a very well-known road builder and and contractor for this kind of construction. And then also the tax income, we would have a nice third of a million dollar hangar that we would be taxing that would bring income to the city, as well as fuel sales, as well as aviation camaraderie. And to us, the aviation camaraderie is very important because it's the first step into a corporate sector. And now we can have a a momentum that we hope that can grow and grow. So what we are asking is that if you all agree and think it's wise, we'd like to see it approved to move forward. And the contract, of course, would be very protective of the city and approved by Ms. Thomas. And and Andrew has got a lot of insight on that. Of course, almost every other airport around us has corporate hangers. We just have never quite got there yet. So this is a wonderful opportunity for us. But we do thank you for the privilege of serving y'all. And and we would like to see some point this move forward and maybe tonight, if that would please y'all.
Do we have?
Professionals.
So is so. So Mr. Yeo, we got you here, but also we have Past Row and Associates in the back of the room. If I can get a representative from Past Row to come up and and talk a little bit about this project, Mr. Lesko.
Just a couple of things to add before Past Row makes their presentation is, in general way that these, one thing the city would get, in addition to the revenue from the land lease, the contracts are written in such a manner as they're 25-year term with two five-year extensions or a 20-year term with two 10-year extensions. And then at the end of the second extension, the hangar becomes property of the city. We take ownership of it. So there is a long-term gain to consider as well while you're thinking about this. And this very looked at favorably by the FAA. I have my hand here checklist if they uses the police leases, public leases with.
Mr. Yeo, did I hear him say a $5,000 a year lease?
Ballpark income, yes, is by the square foot. You know, of the of the lot. So each lot would have that kind of income.
And I think we got some figures on that. I think it's a little. And I think that's in part of the presentation.
Okay.
We'll turn it over to Past Row Associates.
Well, I just know we got a lot of dollar leases and stuff like that. We're trying to get away from those low leases for 100 years.
Good evening to the commission. Andrew Hales with Past Row Associates. Appreciate Don and Judge, you know, basically giving a summary. Matt Singletary, project manager, he's he's got a story to tell you on the slide to give you some more of the background, to give you some of the details. So I think that'll be beneficial to to let Matt go through it.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so yeah, just to follow up on what they were saying, the, so we have this concept plan which we're showing you here. With showing five hangar units, as you can see there. And just on the comment about the the lease amount annually, based on the area that we're showing on this plan and the dollars per square foot, it's actually about 11,000 based on that. But the, you know, the dollars per square foot, 31 cents is what that number is based on, 11,000 and change. That's totally up, you know, to the city and the tenants to negotiate, you know, what that should be. But that's based on what's a market rate in the state of Florida right now. So anyhow, this plan, the airport advisory board, city staff had asked Past Row to try to lay something out to have a more planned out idea for how we could address private hangar development. In addition to like the city manager said, looking at different areas on the airport. And this is the area that we're kind of at the the ending point of where we're at with this slide right here. This is the recommended area that is preferred, in our opinion, right now. So I guess go on to the next slide. I'll go through. We had done a presentation. Actually, go to the next one, please. We've done a presentation very similar to this one, almost the same thing for the airport advisory board, I think in the month of September. So we were asked to come back tonight, bringing this to city commission to provide some of that same information to you all to help get you informed on on what we had discussed. So if you could go on to the next. Okay, so this is a presentation on private hangar development in general, really, but as it relates to private hangers. Since that's the topic of discussion, the I the items that I'm gonna run through here real quick for you. Hangar waiting list, airport master plan, that was one of the main questions that the airport advisory board had was, is this, you know, we're just talking about consistent with the master plan. Possible private hangar development areas, a little bit about private hangar financing and proposed actions for the city and the airport advisory board and everyone involved. So you go to the next slide. So this is, let's just a quick numbers for you on waiting list at Placemuscle Airport. And then also, as far as it relates to our local area, St. Augustine Airport, you can see just by by these numbers, there's a continual waiting list and there's a demand for hangers in our area. That's really all I want to say about about that. So if you could go on to the next slide. So as I mentioned just a second ago, one of the main kind of things that was asked when Pastor was first requested to provide some additional information to the airport advisory board was to kind of make sure that what we're talking about is in line with the master plan at the airport and the the ALP, which is the drawing that goes with the master plan. So in general, on the airport, per the master plan, there's 29 hangar units or areas that are identified. And that's where they're broken down into regions of the airport, three northwest and south. To go on the next slide, please. So this is a shot, one of the drawings from the airport layout plan set showing the north portion of the airport. So near the main entrance and the terminal and Route 100. There's three areas that are identified on the master plan. But really, it's only number three on here that we were recommending could possibly be a spot for a private hangar. The other two are really reserved for more of a public, commercial airline, not airline, commercial aviation type business that would be interfacing with the public. So that's more of like a prime area. So just to note that those aren't really for consideration here. Go to the next slide, please. And then this is on the west end of the airport property, and I'm not sure how familiar all of you are with the airport. But so runway nine two seven is main main runway. This is the west end of where runway nine is, runway nine ends. But there are, as you can see, there are 12 hangar units shown. So that's what's on the ALP for the west side. If you go to the next slide. And then the south side of the airport, this is really where we had recommended either, what you see on the right side of the page there is Moody Road. And then the highlighted hangers that are going, the highlighted area are the hangers, I should say. But the ones that are going closest to the right side of the page, that's the five units that we were showing you on that first recommended concept slide, right in that area. So it is consistent with what you see here. And then also, though, there's some going down along 1735 on both east and west side. You can you can go on to the next slide. So then, this was actually when this conversation kind of started and the private hangar development discussion came up. This was kind of one of the first sketches before we got into all the background on the master plan and all that, that we showed was to kind of give an idea of where a private hangar unit could go on the airport. And so that's what we're showing here. And the the number two is that area that we we landed on is recommended. Another possible recommended location is that number four, which is on the west side and referred to as industrial park area. Go next slide, please. And then this is a similar view to the recommended area. Another thing that was requested of Past Row was to show if you did expand the number of hangar units further than the five that would start on that east and closest Moody Road, what would that look like? And this is if you took it all the way to that next major taxiway, taxiway C. So instead of the five, you could extend this with the same set of the same size parcels for 14 hangers. Please go to the next slide. And so this brings us back to where we started. I'm not really gonna say anything else about this again, but you know, you have similar, or I should say matching parcel sizes for each each five of the hangar units is the intent. And you got a new taxiway and a new access road and then utility connections and stuff like that would be involved to support restrooms inside the hangers. Next slide, please. And then finally, this is a additional slide that we added for this. This is a, this would all end up being, you know, up to the city and the tenants as to exactly how this has worked out. But the, what I'm, what we're showing here graphically is you've got the five hangar units and each tenant would be responsible for constructing and the cost of their building, the pavement for the aircraft out in front of the building and the parking space for vehicular parking in the back. And then, so that's all the one, two, three, four, five would be up to each tenant is what we're graphically showing here. And then the yellow would be all the shared infrastructure, which would, we're proposing could be a shared cost among the five. So you got the taxiway, the access road, utility connections, any stormwater upgrades you may need, all of that sort of stuff. And there's also a, there's a gate. I don't think we mentioned this, but the, one of the reasons this location is ideal is because you have an existing gate and access off of Moody Road right next to the fire station there. But there'd be some gate improvements if this moved forward. That would also be a shared cost. You go on to the next slide. So to go back to kind of what we were talking about earlier with the the amount of money you get from the ground lease per year, like I said, this would be up to the city to come up with what the appropriate rate is. But the 11,500, that's based on the leased area that we have shown on that concept plan at 31 cents per square foot. And now it's, that's for each hangar unit. So if all five were in there, it'd be times five. And then just another note about the responsibilities for the tenants and the city kind of in line with the last slide, we just showed development costs, utility costs, connections for utilities paid by the tenants, including the access gate upgrades, like I mentioned. And then as far as maintenance of the surround, the area around the lease boundaries, as is the case everywhere else on the airport now, that would be a city responsibility to for mowing and, you know, maintaining the taxiways and all that sort of thing. Go to the next slide. So this is the final slide, this is the same kind of, you know, we just posed these questions when we, when we brought this and and discussed it with the airport advisory board also. This is kind of where the discussion started. Should private hangers be allowed? Are there other considerations related to that that, you know, need to be discussed? Mr. Valancourt, as I mentioned, I was here tonight, is kind of where this conversation started. Do we need a response to him specifically, response to other, you know, if there's a future similar request, how would you respond to that? And that's all I got. Hopefully, I gave you a little bit of helpful information.
All right, but two speaker card before we get into any further action. First up is Mr. Valancourt, J. Daniel Valancourt.
Daniel Valancourt, 5600 Milli Way, Green Cove Springs, Florida. Yeah, I've, thanks for having me again. Thanks for the consideration. I've spoken to y'all, I think it was about two, three months ago, we've been working at this. And it's been a really an honest process. I've been happy with everything. Really, just to boil it down for you guys is we, with Charlie's help, we kind of put together, we got about four people, maybe, maybe the fifth person, we're kind of working on it. But we have pulled our resources to basically give you guys a zero-cost revenue stream and a long-term leasing of, you know, asset. So we've tried to make it as is really as painless as possible for for the city. Because, I mean, I don't know if you've seen my my billboards around. I hope they're not that annoying. But they have been a blessing. We have, we have had so many great applicants from this area. It's been awesome. But we know we're, we're, we're ready to invest in it in this city because it has a lot of potential and we're, I'm just excited to be a part of it. So thank you for your consideration. If y'all take any questions.
Any questions from the commission? Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank them for, you know, investing, looking into the city upon that and helping us to grow. Without you guys, you know, we wouldn't be in the position that we're in right now. So you guys are really making Palatka gonna be a destination and hopefully soon we'll be the fly people out here.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Charlie Douglas. I'm at 117 North Second Street. And I'm here in support of the request from Mr. Valancourt to pursue the project of hangers at the airport. In the season of Thanksgiving, I first want to say thank you for all of the support you have given to downtown economic development. Most recently with the amphitheater, it looks great. There are so many people who are using it now. And it is a centerpiece of the the riverfront. And tonight, you have an opportunity to further support economic development in Palatka. I believe that the airport is one of the top three assets we have in the city of Palatka. And for many years, we have waited for the opportunity to transform our airport from a general aviation airport to a a corporate center of aviation. And Mr. Valancourt has come through many times with the airport advisory. He has been very patient and persevered a long time for this. And as a fellow pilot, Daniel is also instrument rated and flies the Cirrus. I I want to stand shoulder to shoulder with Mr. Valancourt to say to the city, please show your support for out-of-town businesses who are investing in this community, something we've looked forward to a long time and it's happening now. Not just at the airport, but in so many different places of our community. And this is another example of outside businesses who are willing to put dollars into this community that could have a tremendous impact citywide and countywide. And to that end, a couple of us have come together and to help address some of the concerns that we have tried to carefully listen to that have arisen from the airport advisory meetings and they're available on YouTube. And i-if mayor, I may approach. These are our letters of commitment from private business owners who are willing to address some of the concerns. At the airport advisory board meetings, and one of those is the issue of cost. And how can we afford to pay for the connection of utilities? And the four current business owners, and we believe that we will have a fifth before the end of the month, but for sure by the end of the year, is to put forward a sum of money that will cover the cost jointly of the project for water, sewer, the site improvement for the pouring of the asphalt or concrete, both on the apron side, closest to the runway, and also on the parking side. And this area is an important area because it is a highly visible area of the airport. It faces Moody Road. It also is right there at the footsteps of runway two seven and the displaced threshold. So anytime somebody flies in in a jet, an executive can look out the window and see what is there. And we we want to be mindful that it is done right. And I have put together some examples of hangers that are hangar homes. These are not what we are proposing because the design standard is so high, because they're hangar.
Then why are you showing them to us? Just a question.
The reason we're showing this is because we want these hangers to be something more than just a hump of metal that you see going down Moody Road. Or someone who is a passenger in a jet and see, and they look out the window before they take off on runway two seven.
or someone who is a passenger in a jet and see, and they look out the window before they take off on runway two seven.
Can you publish it to the jury, um, counsel?
We can, we can achieve high quality landscaping, balconies, windows on the second floor. There are ways that we can, and first, I want to say that Daniel has come here requesting for hangar one. And it would be my hope that you would approve that. The only reason I'm here to talk about hangers two, three, four, and five is that if you were going to disapprove his request to move forward on hangar one because of some of these other elements that have come up in the airport advisory board meetings, then I want to be here to offer a solution. And one of those was a, a commonality, a unity, so that it not be piecing. If there is a piece of the apron that is paved for hangar one and you were concerned that maybe the apron in front of hangers two, three, four, and five ought to be poured at the same time, then I want to be here. Brett Sloan, Mr. Nations, who has also said that he would be the fourth hanger and the fifth that we have coming down the line. We want to be the solution to a, a problem that you may have and have articulated in the airport advisory board. I don't want to get too long-winded, just to say thank you again. This is a phenomenal opportunity that doesn't come around very often. Time is of the essence. I, I hope that this city commission will be known for when businesses come to our community that the, the city can act nimbly and quickly for good ideas. This is a great idea. And I hope that you will vote yes.
You took the remainder of your time and everyone else's. Commissioner Jones.
Charlie, I have a question. As the rendering was up there, it had hangers one, two, three, four, and five. They also showed that it had the ability to go up to fourteen, I believe. Now, in forward thinking, I would think that we would try to have the space to do all fourteen, thinking so that, because it may catch on. You guys go in now and put the five up and people, like you said, fly over and they say, hey, listen, I want a hanger here. So I think we need to be, you know, just in, with the commission, thinking about the long term versus putting the big five hangers out there, put the have the area plotted for fourteen.
So one of the things that is kind of really good about this is you can build the first five and the utilities are going to, we're going to tie them all the way in down the line because the utilities actually start on the, what would be the, I guess that's the east side of it. So we'll run them all the way down to the, the last hanger on the end. So then if another five people want to come in, they do the same thing we do. And that's something we can tackle down the road. Maybe we can get a grant for some more taxiways. I think if we show the proof of concept, be a lot easier, maybe get some grant money to actually have some money to actually build the rest of the taxiway all the way down. That would be ideal because it is very expensive to, but we're taking on the financial burden of the first bit of taxiway ourselves.
Right.
You will get a lot more people in if that taxiway was already built, but this is proof of concept.
So the infrastructure will be already put in place.
That's right. The hard part's out of the way. They just tie right in. You can keep rolling down the, down the taxiway.
All right. You know, some people who can move dirt.
And also natural gas is right there too. So we might get a hot water heater in each one.
Any, and, and so any further questions or comments from the commission? I, I guess the first thing is, go ahead, Commissioner Borum.
For me, I know, you know, D. Charlie Douglas, I mean, I really appreciate what he's doing here on one hundred block here. I mean, in, you know, so I trust him that he's going to help us do the right thing out here at the airport. So he, him and the group definitely have my support.
Mr. Mayor. Of course, I think they're coming tonight for conceptual direction from the commission and there are some details that I'd like to bring up for your consideration. And this is for your consideration because you're the policy setters. But one would be whether or not you're going to request design standards for the hangers that are there with minimum size or, or design features that, that, you know, make for some consistency and also assure some, some, I guess, aesthetic consistency and, and, and attractiveness. Two, do you care whether or not these are just private hangers for private aircraft or is it your thought they're, they're corporate? The big difference there being the amount of revenue that's generated by a small private plane compared to that generated by a corporate plane. Fuel consumption, that sort of thing, usage. And then also three, are you going to allow subletting? So if somebody builds a hanger, can they then rent a hanger space in their hanger if they only have a small airplane? Small, meaning private airplane compared to one that'll take up the whole hanger, can they lease space in their hanger to some other people? Who, who then can, can have a hangar space by paying to the person who built the hanger. Those are, those are some of the, you know, that old saying, devil's in the details. Well, that's the devil in these details is you, yes, you'll end up owning a hanger in fifty years or forty years, depending upon, you know. None of us will be here to see it, but you'll have, you'll own one if it's then you can remember these words and decide whether or not you made the right decision. And then, of course, there's the maintenance standard as well. So all, you know, and I think that's the, the request to come before the commission, as I understood it was, to get your thoughts on how you wanted to proceed in that, in that regard. So, you know, if, well, I think that's, that says it. If those, those factors are, are important for you, then they are. And if they're not, then they aren't. But, but that's something that I think you get to weigh in on.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, I, I think the big thing is here, you're not going to finish this in the night. That's just the reality of what it is. I, I think the most important thing to come out of tonight's meeting is where there's an appetite from this commission to even do hangers. And if that's the case, then my suggestion is that as we start to work on details, we start over workshop. Because I think there's an educational piece that goes along with it, I think for the commission, for the community as a whole. And even for the individuals who are proposing what's in place. This started out as a, as a request from the airport advisory committee to pass a row to look at whether the opportunity existed and if it existed, where were the viable places on the, on the master plan? And so it became an educational tool for the airport advisory board to go back and review the master plan to see exactly what were the viable opportunities and where was the best place to put it so that it wasn't an impediment to future development of the airport. And so Pastor gave several options as related to that. One of the educational pieces that we found was just what the market rate is on private land leases for hangers at thirty-one cents. Some places it was twenty, some places it was maybe a couple pennies more. But the reality of it is those are recommendations. We have an opportunity to set our own standard as to what it is and have those conversations with the individuals who are interested so that it makes sense for everybody. I think outside of that, it's a great opportunity for us to look at, you know, again, the potential of the airport and see if we are moving in a, in a different direction. And this commission is charged with yea or nay, will we even consider, we don't get to the details if we don't, if we don't have an appetite for the private hangers. And so I guess the first question as we move forward is what are, what's the appetite on this commission for private hangers? Heard from Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Borum, Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner McCastle. What are your thoughts?
I'm open to it and the energy and the enthusiasm that came from Douglas reminded me of
He's always like that.
That reminded me, reminded me of the youth that we had here today. And I want to make sure that they have the opportunities in the future. Should it be. So I'm definitely open to having this conversation and having this workshop.
And not prolong anything I should have said since minutes.
So we And so we unanimously agree that we'll look at the opportunities for private hangers. Ms. Thomas. In your excitement, I would probably just slow down.
Mayor, I just wanted to bring up the, at one aspect of doing these private hangers for, for profit corporations, we may lose the ad valorem tax exemption on those areas. So that's something that's also that we can discuss during the workshop.
And that's something that they talked about during the presentation briefly. They just touched upon it. The fact that there would be some property taxes associated with the project for anyone who leased those, who leased those properties. And so quickly.
Yes, the airport advisory board also discussed that in this contract that we would make with each tenant that could deal with all those issues of conceptual design and maintenance standards. And I'm sure that everybody knows that.
I want to see what he brought before us personally.
I'll admit that was a cool trick. If you like this, why am I building this?
So, so I, so I, I think as we begin to move forward, we've got a direction that we want to look at this. We want to look at five versus fourteen is the next conversation. We won't look at just five or more than five or, or how is that? Or how should we, and that's the next.
The reason that we only showed five is that we're the taxiway and access road end. We're getting into a different piece of undeveloped land that actually involves wetlands. We didn't want to go down that road. We wanted to show the long-term plan that could show the fourteen all the way from Moody Road to taxiway Charlie, but the first five are easily achievable. The other one is more of a long-term project. We really do the first five easy before hitting any wetland environmental permitting.
So the suggestion we take a phase approach?
Yes. With the idea that you absolutely can do the other nine, but it's not ready today like the other four or the other five spots are ready today.
The problem we'll have with that, I won't say a problem, but it could be perceived that people have a private airport and you don't have the space to grow any further or no one else could get in on that. So that's something we have to be careful for going forward as well. And also we'd like to see the uniformity, some type of standard. If it's one design or whatever, it'd be uniform. It don't look, you know, some people who's, yeah, pinching pennies and some people who get extravagant. So but definitely that's something I think legal would have to chime in on, give us advice on, on the land lock in that. I mean, that's, that's my opinion.
It's more of a commission. I, I think the commission, and I think that's the purpose of the workshop because once the commission takes an opportunity, you set the workshop, we create opportunities for for the commission to do additional research, for staff to do additional research and for and then for the concerns to be brought forth, I think, to cover whatever, whatever questions you may have. And also any ideas that you may have as well. And so it gives a perfect brainstorm and opportunity for everyone involved as you begin to move forward and it creates opportunity for direction.
Well, and two, in terms of looking at the size and the consistency of where it may be, we, we probably, probably can look at some of the other airports. If there's any new airports, this, I mean, not airports, but the other airports with hangers, T. hangers. Maybe look at some of those designs as well. So you guys have a lot more knowledge on, on those things, but in terms of us, I couldn't tell you what size they should be. So, I mean, I think recommendations coming from the experts, I think, will help give us more guidance, at least from my perspective.
Right. And so that's where we are. Any other questions or concern? So as we move forward, we will, we'll set a workshop. Do we want to set that in December or the beginning of the year? So we set a workshop beginning of the year in January. We'll set a January workshop to address the, to, to start to cover the preliminary conversations and then provide sample contracts and some other things prior to, so that everyone can start doing their own research. Okay. We've got that in place. Thank you all. We'll take a quick recess.
Do you order pizza?
You had to feed on the way to Orlando, but you don't have to do. Y'all might as well just get ready to drive through.
All right, we're gonna. Sonny, you ready? We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting back to order, we will move on to agenda item. Number seven, discussion action contract. Contract with Palacan Boathouse Marina LLC. Better known as PBM for water taxis operations services. Mr. Holmes.
Mayor, um, as you're aware, for a number of years now, we've been attempting to put together a. Agreement, uh, for the operation of the waterfront or supervision oversight of the waterfront management. Along with the operation of water taxis, one of which the city has in hand and one of which, as I'll report later, we, I guess we'll be getting in hand in the next few days. It's, it's not been an easy task and I realize there've been some frustration on part of the commission. But, um, it's just not been an easy task, I think Mr. Legasi has operated in good faith, I know we have operated in good faith. And, uh, Mr. Legasi, I think the agreement that you have in your packet was one that. Jonathan reminded me stemmed from something that Michael Zembor put together. Way back in the day and, um, and then it's been modified and modified and modified and modified, uh, since that time. So. You remember recent history, you directed us to have something, a contract on your, on your table tonight. Mr. Legasi with his advisors, uh. Put together some modifications and his modifications did make the contract more attractive, for instance, he. He took on the responsibility of providing the fuel farm, uh, which before would have been something we were going to have to do. And there were other things that he changed in the agreement. But, um, and the agreement is in front of you and I've given all of you a. A more of a fact sheet or, uh, I guess summary sheet. Based upon our rec, our, our review of the agreement, just to try to point out to you some things, uh, that, um. You know, we think you should be, you should be cognizant of. And, uh, from there, I mean, I'll answer questions, Mr. Glossy is here, Legasi is here. Bottom line is, it's just so hard to project revenue on this, on this endeavor. For Mr. Legasi and then the contract ties any revenue the city gets to a percentage of what he gets. But the, but the costs are real. And, uh, and substantial. And I've, and I've outlined all of that, the cost the city would bear are real and substantial, and I'm sure the costs you would bear are real and substantial too. My concern, just to start out at the outset is. There's no cap on the amount that the city net amount the city would have to contribute. Obviously, we're contributing the boats, the waterfront, the ship store, the docks. Allowing their use, but there's no capital, the amount of out of pocket the city would have to come up with to make the, the, um. The project operate based upon the way that the contract is worded and because of that, I mean, from a manager's perspective. Financial perspective, it's, it's just basically us asking, being asked to write a blank check and I, I can't recommend that, I'm not in a position to recommend that now. Again, I'm not. I'm not, uh, attempting to in any way fault Mr. Legasi, I understand he's got challenges too. That he's working with in terms of the, of the, of the, just the circumstances. But that's where we are at this point from staff's perspective, and if I could tell you there was one or two things you could change and make the contract, uh, acceptable. Then I would, uh, all I could tell you is what I have said in the agreement and that is, one, us not having an escape clause. PBM does, but we don't. Based upon economic feasibility, as you know, if you've read the contract. If after two years they decide that it's not economically feasible to continue, they can bail. We don't have that option, uh, we're, we're in it. And then, uh, two, if there was some cap on the total amount of money that the city would have to contribute. Then you could budget for that, you could weigh the value of that and, and then, you know, maybe a lot of the rest of it would be. Palatable or at least something you could try on a trial and error basis, so that's, that's where I am.
Okay, Mr. Legacy.
Hi, Scott Legasi, one thirty five Middle Point Lane, East Palacca, Commissioner's Mayor.
Good to see you again.
Yeah, good to see you guys, um, yes, it obviously has been a long process and, and, um. I'll tell you that. Some of the, some of the edits that we made the agreement didn't make it in the final draft there, doesn't look like, like the term. We request, we're, we're good with the five years and. And then the second five years, we'd just like to know eighteen months in advance and the same way on the, on the, any additional terms though. So that's, there's, there's a few things like that, but the biggest challenge is. You know, we've been back and forth on this thing, it's not, I don't think it's just a city and, and PBM, it's been through city, different commissioners, different managers. Probably city manager's been the biggest thing, the last city manager, we had a, a workshop, we had pretty much had it sorted out, so we thought, and then we started over again. Covid's involved, we've got flying mosquitoes we gotta think about, but. The biggest thing was the holdup's been the fuel, we've all agreed that fuel's not gonna happen, so we're gonna pay for the fuel and we're gonna put that in.
Blind mosquitoes left with Covid.
Man, I hope so. The, um, the current boat we have, uh, went in the blind mosquitoes around are really tough to, to deal with, so there's a lot of maintenance and cleanup and. And so just to bring it up to speed, we have, uh, we have been operating with the city, uh, the original Pride of Palacca two. Under, uh, an agreement that's in place with the city. Water taxi agreement and we've operated it not, not as often as anybody would like, but it's, it's so expensive to do if you don't do it full time. Every time you stop, you don't run it for a week or so, you takes two guys, three, four, five, six hours. Each to get the thing cleaned up, end up not making any money on running at that time, so you have to, you have to run the boats, you need an operation that. The second boat's gonna add value to it because if you're gonna have personnel and staff on, on, on hand, then. You need to be able to, you know, to monetize it and there's some, some. Some savings there when you have more than one boat running, so. Our plan is to do a rental boat operation, that's probably the most lucrative of everything, although it's a big investment out of our pocket. Boats aren't cheap, you gotta maintain them. But other than that, the only other main revenue stream that, that, uh, would be there is, is some kind of concession operation if we could accomplish that. So there's some big space for that, as you guys know, there's not a kitchen area, there's, there's no infrastructure for concession operation. As the original plan was for a, a larger concession operation and that was one of the main funding sources. So personnel's a, a big expense. So the way we, the way we tried to save some, some dollars to make it, uh, possible to do was to ask the city to help with, with some of the bathroom cleaning. We'll clean the bathrooms daily, but if the city could clean them once a day, then some of the vagrant issues that you guys deal with now. Lightens our load for personnel to have to clean restrooms as well. If you have a guy that's pumping fuel over at our place for boats, water taxi boats or things that are, are rental boats that are working from the city, it takes extra time, get back and forth. All that gets factored in. I think our, our toughest problem with getting a final agreement is when you do a normal business deal somewhere, you sit across the table from somebody and you just figure out what works. In this situation, you know, staff's done a great job, but we sat down, we've met, but the staff can't speak for you guys. And so it's, it's almost negotiating against yourself or in the blind. And so if, if we could, if we could leave here tonight with some answers, some, some answers to some questions. I think the, the agreement could, you know, I think we're close enough that we can make it work for everybody. That's, that's my belief, Don's done a good job of pointing out some, some of the issues and some of those are non-issues actually, we don't have a problem with some of that, so.
Any questions or comment from the commission at this point? Not everybody wants.
I'll just say something, I mean, in terms of, um, you know, just no cap on the city's financial obligation, I mean, I. I don't, I mean, I can't, we can't even fathom, uh, couldn't even prepare a budget.
And we haven't requested that.
Operation would be, so how would. How can the s- city engage in business without knowing? Just a, couldn't even project a, a budget for the operation as it relates to that, just one boat or two boats or whatever. So how can you help with that respect and clearing that up?
We can give the city and, uh, we, we actually did this before, we did an Excel spreadsheet, did an estimation of. Of what we, we thought would be revenue generation in the first year, the second year, third year, fourth year. We actually did it out five years, I've got that with me, it's, it's aided. There's, there's a lot of questions to be answered before I can give you that numbers, what we honestly feel like we can do and the numbers that we're gonna base our, our investment off of. We've got a lot of expense and we have to hire some employees that aren't gonna, you know, we're not gonna cover them for quite a long time, this is gonna be out of pocket. So we, we, we're trying to get those numbers sorted out as well, and so the items that we've asked the city to do. In regards to the boat is provide the insurance on, on the two boats. This, the insurance that the city has to have for whole, whole insurance, if you will. We will pay the operator's insurance policies that, you know, and the, you know, fuel spillage, things like that, that were negligent and we, we create, but city. The, the insurance on the boats is, is high because of the estimated value of the boats and I. Actually, if you've got the boats appraised right now, the, the first boat, it's not gonna be at the same rate the insurance is at. It's just, it's just not, but, so that's, that's a fixed cost there, dock maintenance, it shows here is ten thousand a year. The docks are about ten years old now, but. They haven't needed a lot of maintenance, they're gonna need some, we've, we don't believe it's quite, quite ten thousand a year, but. We've got, uh, terminal maintenance, that's not gonna change, a lot of these sixty thousand dollar number. Almost all that's already there except for the boat insurance. So you're not, you're not taking on new costs and understand you want the facility to pay for everything, but it's just not gonna happen overnight.
But you have a sixty thousand dollar number. And that number isn't capped at sixty.
Cap it at sixty, I don't have a problem with putting a cap on this, nobody, I mean, that's not a problem from our side, but I'm saying it's. Personally, I think you should look at that sixty thousand dollar number. The realization of it from our, our Merle was not able to come, he's over in Tarpin Springs, he was gonna be your Merle handles all this.
Twenty-one year man, right?
Pardon me?
That was a twenty-one year term man, right?
Yeah, yeah, but he's been, actually he's been on this project for about six years, so. Um, but, but we believe it's, the, the numbers you should be really looking at is the cost of operation for this would be thirty-four thousand. Now, maybe add two thousand dollars more because of the, the insurance I was just told is twelve thousand, not ten thousand, that's how we had it factored in. So. But a lot of that, uh, those are all, almost all that's expenses you currently have, I'm not saying that you shouldn't cover those, I'm just saying. There's not gonna be an industrial additional sixty thousand dollars from where you, where you're sitting at today.
But, but this, but my concern is this, my, my concern one is I always hate to negotiate in a public forum. I think that's probably the worst thing that you could ever do in this world when you're dealing with a contract. But the reality of it is this, you put that sixty thousand dollar number out there. Um, when we had those conversations a while back as cost estimates of certain things that were in place. But that, but it, there was never. A willingness to say that that's where we are. And that's gonna be the cap of what it's gonna be and anything, any overages or whatever, that's the, the cost of doing business, I mean, it, you know. For me personally, I'd rather say, hey, hey, here's the contract, we set a number as to what the city's gonna do so we can budget on a regular basis. If that number's amenable to everybody, um, hey, this is what we pay you to operate. This is what you've got, you're not gonna get exclusive use of the entire riverfront. You're gonna have your own area, you're, there's not gonna be this non-compete except for in your restricted area and we keep rolling. And so that part is fine and even, you know, even for a set period of time, uh, and just moving forward. But to sit there and, and, and really using the phrase of writing a blank check without knowing what that check's gonna cost. I mean, and then if you're into a business enterprise, there's a risk involved every time you take, you do business. But the reality of it is for us, I don't wanna sit and be the underwriter of what's in place. Based upon the inability to generate additional revenues based upon what your projections are. I, what I wanna see is if we're saying, if you're saying, hey, this is, this is the number. If there's a number that's out there that makes sense to everybody. And it's, hey, this is what our check's gonna be every year. Uh, if there's additional revenues that are generated based upon what's in place, um, then there's a return on some of it. And if that's the case, then we're fine. But to sit there and say, I don't, we got all these unknown variables that are out there, where at the end of the day, that sixty thousand dollars could easily be a hundred and fifty. You know, it, it doesn't make sense for us.
Yeah, and I don't see how it could be, I mean, we'd have to look at each specific item and I'm happy to go through them with you, but. The sixty thousand that the city is estimating is, is, is down to eight items that, that are specifically listed. And those, those are, those are the ones I say it's really should be thirty-four thousand, but. But if, if it was sixty thousand, what we have to look at is what is our investment? To take what the city's giving us, it's not like we're starting a business from scratch, right? We're being dealt a building that we've got to make work, right, it's, it's not really adequate for what the original plan was for. And then now we don't, we don't know for sure if we've got one boat to operate or two boats, so I need to know that. If there's two boats, then we'll base the numbers off of two boats. And, and so on, the fuel, we figured out a solution for the fuel, we'll come out of pocket and put in the fuel farm.
So first, if I could, uh, and maybe I've missed it, but I'd never before heard. A willingness to establish a cap and you know. The last time we were in these negotiations, I threw out the number, can we cap it at sixty and I was told no. I was told that we could have capped it at sixty, which, which.
Which basically stalled the talks.
Which stalled the talks, um, as far as whether sixty's a realistic number, um, boat insurance alone's twelve. The, uh. Submerged land lease payment, which we don't pay now because we don't. The, uh, submerged land lease payment, which we don't pay now because we don't use the docks for profit. That will be a minimum of ten-six or ten-eight, but it will go to, but it's actually the higher of. Six percent of the revenues generated by the docks or a minimum of point one, seven, seven, seven per square foot. Of course, that's about ten-eight. So you got ten-eight and twelve, thirty thousand dollar or twenty-two thousand dollars. Basically in, in just submerged land lease and, uh, and insurance. Then our maintenance expense, every, every maintenance item over a hundred dollars. And it, and they can wait and accumulate four or five different repairs. And if they exceed a hundred, a hundred percent of that maintenance cost is ours on all the uplands. So that's why the maintenance number we, we budgeted in at, you know, um, basically if, if, if. If I have the ability to wait until three things break before I fix one, and then that's a hundred dollars, and now the city's gotta pay all of it. That's why we, we projected the numbers that we projected and I hope it's high. Uh, but we were. Look, there's no doubt from my, my perspective and I think staff's perspective, there's an advantage to see in this thing operate. Cause we're, we're all operating in, with hypotheticals right now. Will people come ride it? Can you get, how much can you, how many times can you, can you, can you operate it? How many trips will it make? What can your net profit be, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? We don't have any actual experience to work with. So there's no doubt there's a, an advantage to actually having some experience. But it's just from our perspective, you lose one outboard motor now, thirty grand, right?
I think those were twenty-one or twenty-two back then.
They're thirty now. So that's why I'm saying, um, you, 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 you get to the point where, when we say. Our expenses are, are high, I, I don't think that projection, hope is high. But remember, we don't get a dime off of this under this contract for the first nine months, not a dime. And then after the first nine months, we get five hundred a month and then everything else is percentages. We get three percent or two percent of the dock profits, but we paying six percent of the one for the submerged land lease. So that, that's why I was saying from a business perspective, and that's the world I come from is, you know. Without a cap, it just didn't work at all for me. Now, if he's willing to go with the cap, then that.
It changes the target.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but that's the piece and, and, you know, and I, it's been, I mean, it's, it's probably thirty dog years right now. But since we've started negotiating this contract, um, you know, we're, we inherited this. When we walked in the door, set in, you know, January of two thousand fifteen is the first time we, we had a conversation. And that was when we, you know, when the two motors were, were paid for, the, the two outboards for the, for boat number two. And it, it's, it's almost amazing that we were seven years in negotiation on a contract that was already probably seven years old when we got to it. Um, I mean, I, there's no better good faith than that. That's, that's almost long time for longevity pay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I just think that the reality of it is, this is the first time in seven years that I've really heard you say. You or your representative say that you're even, you're even okay with a cap on this. And from just listening to what you just said, it's somewhere between thirty-four and sixty.
Yeah, so it depends on, yeah, what all of the city's gonna agree to cover and then that, that'll, we look at where the cap is on that, on those items, so. Yeah, we haven't said anything. I, I didn't know the cap was still an issue because it was at sixty and I felt like we could make it work under the sixty, so.
Sixty was shot down when it was mentioned. I, I have to be, I was in the room that day.
Well, the structure's quite different now. I mean, everything's changed in the agreement from the terms to the, the fuel, the, um. I've actually made a list, list of, uh, pretty easy to look at, but. Um, the exclusivity, I mean, first of all, I, I don't know why we keep, I, somebody, somebody called me today, said they heard it on the radio that we were requesting. The use of the entire riverfront. I've been saying since the very beginning, and I think Jonathan will back me up on this. We didn't want responsibility from the bridge all the way down to the docks. We never asked for it, didn't want it, that was a Zimbor deal. If you're gonna be at the, the boat ramps, you're gonna be responsible for the entire riverfront.
But you wanted to restrict, but you wanted to restrict uses outside of a restricted area.
What we're saying is if we're, if you're gonna set financial requirements to deliver money to the city. Don't put a competing business next door to us selling the same product, doing the same service we're doing. That would make sense. Everything else is wiped off of there, the bicycles, everything else. We don't really care. We just don't want, we don't want somebody trying to do the exact same thing we're doing. At the other end of the, of the riverfront, if the city decides to do that five years down the road, it wouldn't make sense. Rust invest. And put all our money and effort and time into this and then the city duplicate it somewhere else. So that's, that's all we're saying. And then, so I think there's some misunderstandings on, on, on that.
Something's never changed.
I think, I think you're honestly asking for exclusive control because when I read in there, it said that any, any event, special event. Whatever it may be that you need to have a say-so.
We, we don't. We just need to know that they're gonna happen so we can schedule accordingly. If we're booking, one of the things that the, that the city docks were best worried in, and in the original discussions with there be another twenty docks. Is to bring boaters out of Jacksonville or close by. And you need to know when those, those clips are available so you can book them. But if you have a boating club call you and say, look, we want, we wanna bring five or ten people down, you just need to know when there's gonna be events and when there's not. We don't, some of it, some of that obviously got missed. We haven't had our attorney back involved in this in a while. I think we agreed with the city that we didn't need our attorney, let's just get this thing done and then we'll let our attorney look at it.
So question.
Complicate things every time.
So, 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 so do we have a cap or not?
We, I'm fine with the sixty thousand dollar cap. If you want it less than that, we'll come back with, with our estimates. If you tell me whether there's one or two boats, right, and then, um.
If that was the, that, that, that was, the two boats was in it from the very beginning. So it's, it's gonna be two boats.
We've had a difficult time in getting a second boat or the first boat actually, but we are advised right now. That, uh, we should have the second, but we're now hung up on the insurance. We, they agreed to provide insurance for the boat on during transport and then that ended up being not the case. So we're having to talk to our insurance company. We only had twenty-five hundred dollar tow coverage, which won't handle a seven hundred thousand dollar boat. Um, to see what our increased premium would be. And it's just been one of those things. And I think all of you understand what we're dealing with in terms of the person we're dealing with, not Mr. Gossi, but the, on the other end of this thing. So yes, we should have a boat. We are told it's on the trailer and ready to transport right now. That's what we're told. It would be transported though to. St. John Shipbuilding and put in the water and then it has to pass the water test from the coast guard before he can say he's got a boat to work with.
See, and, and I, I had heard rumored that it was actually gonna be sold. So until today, we don't know that there's a second boat. Until you tell me there's a second boat to factor in, which is a, a different style of boat, which creates opportunities in, in the winter season as well. There, you can run that, the newer boat more, more times than you can run the other boat in bad weather. It'll be more operational months.
I think for me, I don't think it's a matter of keep coming back and forth. We know it's two boats. So I would prefer us to get as close to having a product instead of you having, instead of us having to have this back and forth. Type thing, even if we get to the point of it was, and we didn't say we were selling it. So, um, it may have, we had conversations to see if it was possible, but we didn't say that we were. So I think in order for us to keep from the back and forth, we do have two boats.
Thank you.
Any other comments, concerns?
I think there's, I, I know, I know you guys got a lot on the agenda still. Is there an easy way? No?
No, not for you.
I know, is there an easy way, um, there, Don put together this, um. This list of things that are of concern. So how do we communicate on, on that and, and solve the problems? It's not, it's not difficult if we can just communicate. So does Don have the authority to at least try to get us closer? Or do we come back and do it at a city commission meeting?
We thought this was it.
Yeah.
And are you calling difficult to communicate, reaching out to us like two days prior to the meeting to talk with us individually? What are you calling difficult?
I didn't know, first of all, I didn't get this till today.
I just think it's miscommunication because a lot of things, I just think, I don't wanna say miscommunication. I just think that. There's some miscommunication because assumptions, he says that he didn't know something. And we saying that he should have known, but I mean, the reason I made the request that we have this put. On the agenda at some point so that we could get over this, so that we could try to move forward. So that we could try to come up with a resolution as we have tried to do so before. But every time we come to this point, it's always something new that has not been taken in consideration. And I think, again, we as the commission, we're dealing with something, we're trying to rectify a situation that we didn't get ourselves into. This is probably before I was here. I mean, way before I was born. No, but serious, we are truly dealing with something and we all wanna come to a resolve, but we wanna make sure that we come to. A resolve that's applicable for everybody because we don't wanna say, if we don't move forth with this contract, we are literally gonna be back at square one. Trying to start all over with whomever else may wanna come in. Oh, we may not even have anybody that wants to come in. So I think in good faith, he has stuck around this long. Let's try to come to a resolve of some sort if we're gonna continue or if we're not.
I, I just wanna, I just wanna clear up that. But I, I do know that, you know, it was on my jacket and. I raised the question to, to make sure that, uh, we get this thing closed down. I think I brought it forward. Um, to the commission or what have you, let's get this thing closed out. So, but, I mean, again, it was a lot of enthusiasm in twenty fifteen. First came in here, you, you, you said that, you know, you have ran boat operations, um, for some time. And you thought that what was in the current, in, in those contracts at that time, because it was myself, Commissioner Campbell and Mayor Hill. Twenty fifteen, January twenty fifteen, when we had that meeting here. But long story short, you were very excited, energetic. And you thought that you could move this forward. I don't know what stone, the, some terms in the contract, whatever it may be. But long story short, um, we do need to bring this thing to, to, to a close. And I thought tonight was gonna be the closing based on your best, um, offers. And what the city would do. So, um, if, if the commission wanna continue to move forward, we're closed. I'll be happy to do so, but, um, we, we can't, we can't continue this on. We just can't.
I can't either and, and, and I appreciate your concerns. I, I, if I could just take one second, you guys need to remember the history of this. It was put out from RFP in, in two thousand thirteen, I believe it was. We don't want anything to do with the city putting in a marina. We're spending money there to develop ours. We put everything on hold because the city decided to do a marina. They didn't call it a marina. I responded to the RFP after two city commissions where I stood up and complained that the city shouldn't be in the marina business. Went forward with the RFP, that agreement back then is, has been a, a real problem all the way through. Cause that started as a whole other scope of, of, of an operation. This is, this is a dwarfed, very small operation, which is fine. But it takes a lot of adjustments to make it work. And we, I don't believe that Boathouse Marina or PBM has, has been the cause of all the delays. I mean, I, I respectfully just, I think Don, Jonathan would look at the calendars and see what, what we've invested in this in time and effort. I mean, it's substantial. And we've, we've tried to get this thing done.
So you don't think, okay, so is it the city's, um, the city, oh, you're saying.
I think it's a lot of circumstance. We've been back and forth with, I, I mean, I'm, this is our, you know, I don't know how many city managers we've been through trying to get this done.
That's, that's, that's not good, what you just said. You're from the city was, was, is not, is the reason why the contract, we're not contractually.
I'm not, I'm not saying this city. Ministerial point was, and this has been a stumbling point from the beginning, was that initially when the RFP was put out. He understood that there was gonna be a large scale concession, i.e. restaurant. And he looked upon that as being a source of revenue. And they got taken off the table.
Well, yeah, and I knew about that, that, the, the, the company that was selected, you know, they had some other issues that killed that deal. Yes. I, I, I know about that.
I mean, that's why we're taking all this time. I, I think at the end of the day, I mean, and, and Commissioner, January eighth, two thousand fifteen to today. Right. We actually discussed this first. Um. The reality of it for me is this, I don't wanna carry this into twenty twenty-two. I don't wanna carry negotiations into twenty twenty-two. If we're gonna do it, we're gonna get it done between now and then. In my mind, this is the first time that. You ever put the cap out and, and the stalls from the cap have been pre-pandemic. Um, your previous council that you had in place, we talked about dealing with concerns when we thought we were close to a deal. And you guys rewrote a deal that addressed our concerns by giving them a new name. All you did was rewrite the concerns in a different way with an entirely new contract during that time. Your red line contract was all red line. And so you get credit for a lot of delay because a lot of delays were on your part. We, and we'll take responsibility for some delay as well, but I think overall, it doesn't matter. We're here today. And I can tell you, we're at the last, last shot for me. I think, you know, I think the reality of it is, this is closer than we've ever been. To striking a deal. Um, just to hear your one comment made more sense than sitting in all those other meetings I've sat in with you before. And it's, I, it has to be tiring to you because it's, it's definitely tiring to me.
Yeah, ab- absolutely. We need to get it done. It's, it's held us up. We, we, if we're gonna move forward. With the city, then we won't be doing certain things over at our marina, right? So it doesn't make sense to duplicate and work against the city. So, so that's what we've been holding, waiting to know. I, I need to get this done and the quicker we get it done, the better for everyone.
Can we hammer this out and get this knocked out based upon the concerns that are in there by, by the first meeting in December?
I think we, yeah, I, I'm good. I've got Thanksgiving to do and that's it. I'm, I'm, I'm yours. Tell me when you wanna do it.
And if we can't get it done at that point, can we agree that we're not gonna get it done?
We can agree, yes.
In my opinion, we've got a checklist.
Okay.
I've got a checklist of the concerns.
Yes.
That, that I have. The cap eliminated it. Well, it's a game changer for me.
Right.
So at that point, I think we can go down the concerns. Scott said that they were willing to give on some of them. Some of them may be just the way it's worded. But you do have an exclusive right now, the way that contract's worded on the whole river.
Right. I, I think we've all, I think we've all exercised a lot of patience and want, and wanna get a deal done. But my thing is, let's, let's agree that if we can't get this done by our next meeting. I think, which is plenty time to hash out the short number of details we've got in place. Then we, we should all agree that we're not gonna get it done.
Yep. So just tell me, how, how do we do that? Do I just sit down with Don and go through it and then he gets with you guys or?
He's got the list.
Okay, you got counsel and you got done.
Right.
And so I, I, I think this is the first time we can knock it out. Ms. Brown's been waiting for this boat since, um.
I know.
It's, it's Carter Mundale. So, um, we are. So we've been trying to get this done. So, uh, I, I think this is, you know, it, and it's up to the commission. It is, that's just my thought, but it's up to the commission if we can get there. And I, I guess the question is, are we, I mean, is everyone, what's your thought on that? And if so, we need a motion, I think.
Um, I'll make a motion that, um, the city manager, um, in staff, um, legal. Um, work with, um, PBM to, um. Sort out the concerns that we, the list of concerns that we had, that, um, we, we get those cleared. And, um, we'll reconvene in December, December meeting.
There's a motion for a second. Do you need further discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna. For the sake of everyone waiting on other items, I'm gonna pass number eight. And nine, and we're gonna move into items, into item number ten. Uh, we've got a lot of folks who are here. For item ten, we'll, we will breeze through, um, all five items on ten. So that we can, um. Respect time. We're gonna go through, we'll go through item ten and come back to items eight and nine. So at this point, we'll go into public here. Well, I'm sorry, I got a speaker on seven. I, I do, I, it wasn't you. You wanna go ahead and speak? I'm sorry. Miss Kitchen, I, I forgot you. I mean, I did, but you can come up now if you really want to. Okay, I'm gonna cross your name out.
This boat has been on our agenda. Um, one of the things was that when it first came up. There were people who laughed and called. One of the things was that when it first came up, there were people who laughed and called it, uh, my father. Because they didn't think the money could be raised for it. And we, the money got raised. It took ten years to get, find a grant. Then I traveled somewhere everywhere to find and get it in. And then we worked with it. We took a nonprofit committee and put this thing together. It's been so long, all of them did it. I hate to say this. The people who really worked, they didn't get paid, they didn't do anything. Mr. Carson, it was more than fifteen years, about fifteen years when they put an RFP out. One of the things is wrong is that the committee did a lot of research to find the money, get boats here. None of the city managers that we had since Mr. Bush left ever sat down and let us explain to them how we fought the boat should operate. We thought that the boat could operate without having the city to spend any money. I still think that's part of what can be done if somebody will sit down and talk to us. I told Mr. Carson when he started out and got the deal, we had the train people who got excited about us having a boat. They said they bring people down on day trips. While the train was going down, they drop them off, they pick them up, going back to Jacksonville. They, they do it for weekends, they do it for weeks. And if we got with the restaurants and hotels and things, it would bring business into them. I would like to know that y'all take a good hard look, waiting this long to get somebody to operate those boats. And he talks about the docks, those docks down there, part of what, those docks, how they got there, they were paid through boat money. We have the, um, state people, water management was gonna go in with us. The state parks, people were gonna go in with us because they wanted another entrance to, um, the river down there. And it was, it was people who were interested in working with us to help it. And we were trying to promote the business so we could get it done without costing the city a whole lot, plus looking for another grants or opportunities. I want to draw a notice because people who really worked and had nothing to, some of them didn't even live in the city. But they came to meetings and we traveled, looked at boats. Three boats were given to us, one for parts, two for to be changed over. Mr. Carson thought that they couldn't use one to, because we lack in Crescent City wanted to join in with us too. So there are ways, if you really want to do something, you can really get it done. Sitting here hearing how much, how bad it is, how much it's going to cost us. My family started two businesses and couldn't borrow a dime from a bank. And nobody had medical insurance for a hospital back then, but my grandma took people in and took care of them. So if we really want these boats, which were supposed to come to be a carrot or something to bring more people to Palacca, when you bring people in and see us, then they come and want to do stuff with us. We've lost all that. It's very disappointing and I hope, I know y'all listening to me because I talk to you a lot when I catch you. But we've got business people in here and know if we all come together, look what they're trying to do with the airport. We just need a group to come together and make sure, and if you have to put this, be, put the thing out for, to find somebody else to come running, then stop messing around and do it.
Comments from Ms. Brown. Next up, Ms. Kitchen.
Allegory Kitchens, ten twenty-seven South Twilt Street, Palacca, Florida. Uh, I won't say everything I was going to say since you all already voted to continue beating this dead horse. I'm very disappointed. You need to cut Miss, the Boathouse Marina off and, and, and just stop the negotiations and stop the contract. Everything I've heard tonight is deja vu all over again, is a great yoga bar I used to say. Same, same words from the commission, when it was my commission, and I voted against this, by the way. Same words from Boathouse Marina. Trying to nail a contract down is like trying to pick up Jell-O off the floor with your bare hands. I don't think it can be done, but you all decided to kick it down the road and beat the dead horse again. And I just think you need to cut, you need to cut your losses and drop this contract. And if Mr. Legacy wants to sue you for the twenty thousand dollars he threatened to several years ago, have him show you the financial records of how much money he's getting for the twenty-eight hundred people that Mr. Carr said has been down here for the part from follies that went out on that boat at thirty-five dollars a head. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Brown. Brown. Thank you. I appreciate you. We love you. So we're going to close that item. We're going to move on to item ten of the agenda. At this point, we will go to public hearing. Order is twenty-one dash forty, vacating and abandoning the portions of West Main Street located in North Nineteenth Street, North Twenty-first Street, second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordnance twenty-one forty, New York City of Placa, according to the town and abandoning that portion of West Main Street located between North Nineteenth Street and North Twenty-first Street within the city of Placa, according to that copy of Dick's map of Placa, on file at the Circuit Clerk, Gordon, Clerk of Gordon, Putnam County, providing for an effective date, providing for conflict, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. We're not opening the floor for public hearings. Is there anyone here for public hearing? You can use the yellow speaker's card in the corner of the room, or you can dial three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we're going to close public hearing at this time. Is there any further discussion on this motion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B, ordinance twenty-one dash forty-one, vacating and abandoning portions of North Twenty-first Street between West Main Street and continuing a hundred and eighty feet south, second reading. Just for the record, this is the one we voted down on first reading.
Thank you. Ordnance twenty-one forty-one, and ordinance of the city of Placa, Florida, vacating and abandoning a portion of Twenty-first Street between West Main Street and continuing a hundred and eighty feet south within the city of Palaca. According to that copy of Dick's map of Placa, on file at the Circuit Clerk, Clerk of Gordon, Putnam County, Florida, providing for an effective date, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for scrivener's errors.
You can move the voter down. You can, you can, you can, you can move to deny if you choose to. So there's a motion to deny. There's a motion to deny at the second. Is there any public hearing at this time? Same rules apply. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. All in favor of denying the vacation? Say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item C, orders twenty-one dash, twenty twenty-one dash thirty, adopting the community redevelopment plan update for downtown Palaca Community Redevelopment Area, providing for the extension of the community redevelopment agency's operational timeframe. First reading.
Ordnance twenty twenty-one dash thirty, an ordinance of the city of Palaca adopting the community redevelopment plan update for the downtown Palaca Community Redevelopment Area, providing for an extension of the community redevelopment agency's operational timeframe pursuant to the Community Redevelopment Act of nineteen sixty-nine, chapter one sixty-three, part three, Florida statutes, providing for scrivener's errors and providing for an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Um, do we have representatives on the phone?
Yes, Mayor Hill, John Jones here from SNME sixteen fifteen Edge Water Drive, Orlando, Florida. I am available to answer any questions this time.
We have any questions for Mr. Jones? No questions from Commissioner Jones. Seeing no questions at this time, we're open for a fourth public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Hearing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any further questions from the commission? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hill.
Next up, ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, amending homestead exemptions, articles eight, section seventy-eight dash two seven one, sub six, subpar in C and D of the Palac Municipal Code as it pertains to applying for additional homestead exemptions for certain low-income qualifying seniors. First reading.
Ordnance twenty twenty-one.
Second reading. First is the first.
Ordnance twenty twenty-one dash forty, forty-two, ordinance of the city of Palaca, amending article eight, a homestead exemption, section seventy-eight dash two seventy-one, C, D, of the municipal code of the city of Palaca as it pertains to applying for an additional homestead exemption for certain low-income qualifying se- senior citizens, providing for conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for scrivener's errors.
So move second.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner McCaskill, a second by Commissioner Moore. Now, before for public hearings, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And I thank you to Mr. Parker for being here as well. Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Moving on. Ordnance twenty, twenty twenty-one dash forty-three, amending section ten dash three and ten dash four of the Palac, of the Palac Code of ordinances by revising the location requirements and hours of sales of alcohol establishments in downtown Riverfront DR and downtown business DB districts, first reading.
Ordnance twenty twenty-one forty-three, an ordinance to amend section ten three and section ten four of the Palac Municipal Code by revising locational requirements and hours of operation for alcohol establishments in the downtown Riverfront DR, downtown business DB zoning districts, providing for scrivener's errors and providing for an effective date.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Uh, Mr. Holmes, Ms. Walsh, who's second.
Mr. Mayor, uh, for convenience, I will, uh, essentially, uh, in response to uh, direction from the commission that we received, I believe at the last commission meeting, we prepared a, uh, closed ordinance which would amend your alcohol ordinance, section ten four and, I believe, ten three of alcohol ordinance uh, by, uh, essentially eliminating the current locational, uh, restrictions that you have in the downtown business and downtown riverfront districts. Uh, the separational, uh, distance requirements between alcohol-serving establishments, which right now are three hundred feet in the absence of a conditional use approval by your, um, zoning boards. It would eliminate that requirement in the DB and DR districts. It would also, uh, change the requirement of the separation between alcohol-serving establishments and churches and schools to one hundred feet in those two, um, zoning districts. In addition to that, it would allow the serving of alcoholic beverages beginning at nine AM on Sunday mornings. It would leave the closing time as it currently is, uh, on early Sunday morning, but it would allow, um, alcohol to be served, uh, at nine AM uh, on Sunday mornings, again, in those, uh, in those districts that I've mentioned.
Uh, manager, attorney, um, just in those two districts, uh, do this ordinance only apply throughout the city to those two districts?
Well, the ordinance, as it existed earlier or previously applied across the city, we specifically exempted the locational requirements for the distances in the downtown business and downtown riverfront districts by that wording, by specifically excluding them that requirement in those districts. So, uh, so in the remainder of the, of the, of the city, those same distance requirements would exist.
Is there any reason why you oppose that versus just doing away with the requirements citywide?
Well, the most direct answer is that was the direction we got from the commission. From a philosophical perspective, it's been long talked about that we would be creating a entertainment district, so to speak, uh, in the downtown business and perhaps downtown river, or downtown riverfront and downtown business districts. And that, in that entertainment district, you might want to relax the requirements that you have for establishing distance between alcohol-serving establishments because of the fact that you were looking at creating a, uh, an entertainment district in those locations. In the past, we've had, I won't, I won't speak to some of the things that are going to be spoken to, but we've had, we've had, uh, inquiries from potential business owners, people who are going to build businesses or buy businesses, concerned about the fact that they were going to have to make a substantial investment in that downtown riverfront district, for instance, um, to have an alcohol-serving establishment and then have to depend upon their ability to obtain a conditional use that would allow them to establish within three hundred feet of another alcohol-serving establishment. And, and that was an impediment. Now, you know, um, they could roll the dice and hope they got approved or, or not, but that was the impediment. So the, the commission gave us the directive to try to address that in those districts, which, which we did. And, uh, and then the, uh, same with regard to distance between alcohol-serving establishments and churches and schools. We reduced that to a hundred, uh, instead of the previously existing three hundred feet um, in those districts, but we didn't change the ordinance as the remainder of, of, of the, of the city. And you, I mean, obviously you can, you can do what you'd like, but we were thinking that it was the desire of the commission to treat the downtown business and downtown riverfront districts different when it came to proximities of alcohol-serving establishments.
I just have a concern that if I had a business out on Highway nineteen, city part of it, if I wanted to do the same, that I had to get a variance versus I've been included in this ordinance. So I just, I don't know what the rest of the board feel on it, but it's just my opinion that I wouldn't. We say we were going to try something different. We're trying to be forward-thinking, um, just doing what we're doing as citywide. Or amending the order, excuse me. This amendment citywide versus just those two districts. That's just my personal opinion. I wanted to put it out there. I don't know what the board favor. Any comments based upon the com- any comments, um, or responses to Commissioner Jones's comments?
I actually would be, uh, in favor of Commissioner Jones', um, statement. I think if we're going to look for change, just go ahead and create the change now versus having to come back to this point if we can. So I would definitely echo the sentiments of that to let's go ahead and it, for me, I would be interested in making that change across the board.
And I, I share the same, um, sentiment because if we're gonna, if we're gonna open it up for a particular area, it could put other, um, establishments at a disadvantage, um, in terms of being able to, uh, serve, serve customers as well. So, um, in terms of being consistent, we don't need to have it in one area and then you, okay, well, you can drink in this area, you can't drink in this area, you can't. So we, I think we need to be consistent across the board. And that way, people will know where they can and where they cannot and what hours without having to be, um, you know, just not knowing and, and have, have some issues with, with the law.
Without just prolonging the meeting, consistency, consistency is key. And I just agree that we need to keep it consistent across the board.
Well, well, let's, let's go through all of it. We've got a number of speaker cards. This is the, I guess the other thing while we're on, on the consistency piece is the times. You're going from, we're seven to two, Monday through Saturday. I think we're seven to two, Monday to Sunday. From an enforcement standpoint, the least that I have to guess, have to figure out what day it is is always the same. It's, it's got nine. Yeah, we're just running, I just run it all the same. Is the final ordinance the one that we have in the package?
No, not in my opinion. I'm trying to, I'm double checking right now, but I don't think it is. This doesn't have a specific exclusion of the downtown business and downtown riverfront, um, from the locational requirements. I may have a different one, but this is not the one that I dread.
So.
And so, there's a, I don't have a C in my packet now. The original ordinance does, and the C, the subparagraph C under ten-three would have state, does state, the license premise shall not locate within three hundred feet of any established license premise, provided, however, the license premise may be granted a conditional use to locate within three hundred feet of any established license premise. And then the added language was this provision does not apply to downtown Riverfront and downtown business districts. That's not in the ordinance. It's in my packet. It may be in yours. That's what I was concerned about. I don't see that in, it's not in mine.
A and B.
You have an A and B in mind, but you don't have the C.
A and B, and then it goes back to A, Monday through Saturday, and yours?
Maybe, there's some.
So, let's just refer to the one that's on the screen. I've got a number of speakers' cards. I want to go ahead and let the speakers go ahead and speak first. I'm going to open the floor for public hearing at this time, and then. First up is Wayne McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wayne McLean, two eighty-five West River Road, Black, Florida. I'm here tonight as the, representing the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce as their chairman for this year. We applaud the commission for the infrastructure development that you all have put in, that it does not go unnoticed by the business community, and we applaud the commission for taking a look at the alcohol ordinance. Last Monday, we had a chamber meeting, a board meeting, and we approved without hesitation the support of the commission in revising the ordinance. Now, tonight has taken a little different turn, which we're in favor of, but I did want you to know that we do support it, and this has come about because of all the great developments that's going on in not only downtown Palack, but in Putnam County in general, and a Quint Stuter is kind of the person that's been here. Many of you have heard him talk about one of the most important things we can do is to have an ordinance that allows for the serving alcohol beverages in a less restrictive environment. So, we applaud the commission for this. We hold our lead's support. From the chamber point of view, the lessening of restrictive environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Douglas.
Good evening, commissioners. Charlie Douglas, one-one-seven North Second Street. I rise in support of this ordinance. I just would encourage the commission to rely on the advice of experts. Quint Stuter was here just a few days ago, and in the meeting at the Hall Hall, Quint Stuter said that this ordinance is the number one most important thing that the city of Palack needs to do for economic development in downtown. So, I just would encourage you to follow the advice of the experts and adopt this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Holst.
Mayor, commissioners, um, so, thank you for addressing this. I work, my name's Kathleen Holstknack. I live at one thirteen Shell Trail, Satsuma. I work on behalf of One Putnam, which is a nonprofit organization that's bringing the community together to achieve a vibrant community. On January ninth of twenty-twenty, I brought to the commissioners, the city of Palack, the suggestion to modify the existing alcohol ordinance to become a more, more friendly for downtown growth. Some of the confusion that we have right now about the exemption of the business district may have been what I brought forward on that night. So, what we did was we researched what some of the other surrounding communities had, and Pensacola has been our model that we are looking at. So, Pensacola, in, in our looking at their, their laws, they had exempted their bound downtown business districts. So, we went ahead and suggested that at that point in time, but I think we fully support what you're saying is it would be more consistent to have it throughout the county. No problem with that. And we've also had some mentions of Quint Stuter, and he definitely has been our advocate and has supported this wholeheartedly. He has a quote for me to read to you tonight. By Pensacola exempting the dense business area from its alcohol ordinance restriction, it has allowed the Pensacola downtown business corridor to flourish and attract high-quality dining and entertainment establishments. I highly recommend that Palack adopts something similar so its downtown can attract more dining and entertainment organizations. This ordinance update is vital to Palack becoming a vibrant community. So, that's the end of his quote. And so, in closing, I have no problem in One Putnam representing them with your recommended change, I guess, for more consistency. Thank you.
Jerry Hafner.
I'm Jerry Hafner, one-twenty-two Hillty Lane, East Palack. I'm here tonight. I'm a member of Revitalize Historic Palack, and of course, previously a member of Palack Main Street. I'm excited, frankly, to be here to support this. It's something we've needed, I think, for many years. I'm not sure why we haven't gotten there before now, but I'm glad to see it come up. I'm also very pleased with Mr. Jones's recommendation to make this citywide instead of just in downtown Palack. We finally have folks who have realized the potential to downtown Palack, but to make them realize and, and make their dreams come true and provide them with some return on their investments, we need this to make them be successful. Thank you.
Jeremy Alexander.
Jeremy Alexander, one-thirty-four Timmer Lane, Palack. Also want to applaud the commission for being bold. My budget is a little bit smaller than Mr. Douglas, but I will keep my remarks short. My visual aid. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, and obviously, Mr. Jones also appreciate your improvements to the ordinance very much.
Rex Sloan.
Rex Sloan, P.O., Box twelve fifty-seven, Palack, Florida. I'm obviously in support of the city's willingness to take a look at the ordinance. I think anytime the city can bring our codes in alignment with investment in the business district, it's good for our community, and I think you'll find this is the type of irrigation we need to grow the crops and economic development. I applaud you. Thank you.
Angie Bates.
Angie Bates, thirty-four hundred Crow Avenue, Palack. Again, like everyone else, thank you for, I think it was a good meeting, a lot of energy with the kids. I think it's carried over. I think it was good to hear, you know, that reminded me of a pep rally. I mean, I, too bad they couldn't go play tonight, but, I mean, I think good things are happening. I think the airport was a kickoff, and I think this is another thing. And so, anything we can do to show the outside world and Palack that we're open for business, we're ready for growth, we're ready to see that, I think is a step in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public hearing at this time? Especially, fill out a card, you can come up, fill out a card later. You're not, we, we don't, your general public comment, if you're going to speak on your mental health card, you missed your time, that it already passed. If you're going to speak on this item, you can speak now. So. So, so, you're speaking on this item, then fine, if, well, you're not going to speak tonight, you're welcome. We've already closed public hearing.
Mayor, when the floor is closed to public comment.
You got three comments that you want to read into the record. Just go ahead.
Thank you. The first comment I'd like to read into the record is an email from Joseph B. Wiggins, Senior of the Wiggins Life Firm, P.A., ninety-one Brands Com, Route, Suite seventeen, Green Cove Springs, Florida, three-two oh four-three.
Read it slow.
Yes, sir. Dear Clerk Krantz, please relay our support from amending the alcohol ordinance to allowing serving in the downtown area. Wiggins Investments of North Florida, Inc. is a new property owner at six thirteen St. John's Avenue and believes this issue has to be changed in order to revitalize downtown. Respectfully, Joe. That concludes the memo.
Next one.
The next one is a phone comment that I received from Ed Killer Broom, by the lane Main Street, Palack, Florida, three-two-one-seven-seven. His statement reads as follows, "In support of changing the ordinance to where alcohol could be served earlier on Sunday, if restaurants can serve earlier, it would be beneficial to the downtown district." End of memo.
Is there another?
Yes, sir. The last I have is from Colin Bingham, eight-two-three-seven Bay Tree Lane. His organization is C D C C, and he came in and signed his yellow speaker's card before the meeting and regretted that he was unable to attend. His note says, "I am in support of the revision is of the liquor ordinance." End of comment.
Okay. Do we have to read the email, I mean, the comment that came via email that was forwarded to us?
If we should, fairness, go ahead.
I was on a copy list of email that was circulating around, but, I mean, it, it didn't, I didn't see that as being something that was, that was something that we had to read into the rec, be read into the record tonight.
I just want to make sure, just in case that person was expecting it and it not be.
Just read it for the sake of, so there is no, so that, so that everything, everything is being read in.
Mayor, I didn't, I'm not in receipt of this. May I have you provided it for the record, please?
We'll have them forward it to you. It'll be on record and too. Can you just read it? You can read it, Commissioner Campbell. I take it that means you didn't want to read it.
I wasn't gonna read it.
Mayor, I'm sorry to read it. From John, sent Winston, November seventeenth, eight-to-eight. Subject Thursday, City Commission meeting. Good morning, Don. I'm away from Palack until November twenty-ninth, so I'm not going to be able to attend the City Commission meeting on Thursday evening. However, I would like to express my support to change the alcohol ordinance to allow for more flexibility for businesses that wish to survive ahead. Please convey this message to the mayor and the city commissioners. Also, if you can provide the contact information for the city commissioners, I will write to them directly. Thanks for your help. John Vander Werf, sent from my.
Which I did, by the way.
He did too. I got it.
Is that, is that all? Seeing nothing else, closed public hearing at this time, and reconvene discussion with the commission.
To amend Section ten-sixty-four of the Black Code of ordinances by revising the location of cell alcohol establishment throughout the city.
Second.
Mayor, may I please interrupt? Um, there is a motion on the floor by Commissioner Campbell to prove in the very beginning of the discussion. Has it been withdrawn for the record?
I don't have, I can restate, I, do I have to?
It have to be withdrawn.
So, could I ask a question? Are you squared away on the motions in the second side?
No, so I'm not.
You squared away on it. I got an easy way to do it. Can you withdraw your motion for me?
Okay.
Is there a friendly to whoever seconded it?
Second.
Mr. McCaskill, okay. So, there's no more motions on the floor as of this time?
Okay, so, if the, the ordinance that you have on the floor tonight that has been advertised and that the public's been made aware of is up there on the, on the screen, if your intent was to simply eliminate the three-hundred-foot locational distance separation between alcohol-serving establishments, your motion could be to approve the ordinance striking subparagraph C, because that's the only location where the three-hundred-foot separation between licensed establishments is found. On the other hand, if you're wanting to eliminate that restriction as it applies to, uh, this is between alcohol-serving establishments and churches and schools or daycares, it's going to take a more substantial revision.
So, the new motion can include strike in paragraph C. Is that what you're saying? I'm just sorry.
Make the motion to make it across the city of Palack and not just to the downtown.
Counsel, can you advise, please? He's saying it's going to be more substantial.
Oh, you want counsel to advise, I'm sorry.
I agree with the city manager's assessment. If we, if you want to eliminate it in the downtown area, strike subsection C. If you wanted to go even further for, across the board, then we have to redraft what we have there, or you guys have to tell us how to draft it so that we can, might even have to be re-advised.
See, sub, I know I'm not the attorney, but just for clarification, I played like I was one for forty-four years. So, so, if you look at C, that's your only prohibition for alcohol-serving establishments locating close to, next to each other. C says, "A licensed premise shall not locate within three hundred feet of any established license premises, provided, however, that a licensed premise may be granted a conditional use to locate within three hundred feet of an established license premise." If you eliminated that, you don't have a prohibition in the ordinance that would restrict a licensed premises' ability to locate next to another licensed premise. You just strike the whole C. What I had done earlier was I had added, in my capacity as acting, well, I'd added, "This provision does not apply in the downtown Riverfront, D.B. and downtown business zoning districts." So, I had left the three-hundred-foot exclusion in, but I had, had eliminated it in the D.B. and D.R. districts, but if you want to just eliminate it across the board, just as the licensed premises, all you got to do is strike the whole C, just as it's written up there, just, just move to approve the ordinance, striking subparagraph C, and you've eliminated it. Now, if you want to go further as to churches, you know, and eliminate any restriction as to them and licensed premises and schools, then we are going to have to redraft the ordinance. Because right now, if you struck C, what you'd be left with would be an ordinance that allows licensed premises and churches to locate within a hundred feet of each other in the D.B. and D.R. districts, but keeps them at three hundred feet in the remainder of the districts.
We talked about time. We didn't talk about distance. We talked about time. You was to eradicate, you didn't say that.
But what do you want, your permission, John?
As I said, to, to eliminate the distance in the second, subsection ten dash four as well. So, this is what we're amending, ten-three and ten-four, right? That's what.
Ten-four just has that to do with hours.
Ten-four is time.
Right. So, we gonna, the hour's going to be the same across the board throughout the city. Yeah.
Monday through Sunday? Does it change all seven days?
Right, because if you, if you go, even though Chili's don't open like that, but just say, use it as an example, establishment that serve alcohol, they'll be having to do the same thing out there as they would downtown.
I get it.
Part of this, if you look at subsection B, the conditional use would still be a part of it as, as it relates to religious and daycares. And do you want to eliminate the conditional use? Do you want to eliminate the distances? I mean.
Let me, let me try to make it clear. This, what we're trying to establish downtown in the downtown business district, we want to establish it citywide throughout. Any other questions?
That was not what was stated.
This is me talking. So, tell me what I said.
I'm trying to get you to understand what you're saying now is not what was stated first.
I said.
Talking about time.
Hold up, hold up.
I did not say that. I said.
Commissioner Jones, hold up. Commissioner Jones has the floor. State your motion as you want it, for clarity.
I oppose a motion right now to amend subsection three, ten-three and ten-four. pose a motion right now to amend subsection three, ten three and ten four of the Palacca Code of Ordinances by revising the location requirement and hours of sale of alcohol establishments throughout the city limits of Palacca, striking paragraph C.
And leaving the remainder. So which means you leave the conditional use language in, okay?
You're also leaving the distance requirements and for churches and schools and alcohol serving establishments.
And daycare.
Is that what you originally stated?
C in. So, 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 so.
City Manager Homes, is that what you originally stated?
Yeah, I mean.
It's, it's, it's tomato, tomato. It's what, they're, they're saying the same thing in two different ways. So who, there's, they're literally saying the same thing. On the, the only clarification I need as far as your motion's concerned is on the is on your times. In your time, because you didn't specify how you want the time adjusted in your, so you're saying you want the time to be under paragraph A, you want that to be extended to Sunday?
It's gonna be a whole, it's gonna be a whole different order, so it's gonna have, we gonna have to come back, this is gonna have to come back, you can't make a motion this tonight, it's a whole different.
Listen, listen, hold up, Commissioner Campbell. Let him go ahead and say what he's gonna say. Go ahead, Commissioner Jones. Your, your intent is to extend, is to, to extend the time to seven AM on Sundays in those, in the district. Is that what?
No, this is not a pop.
Well, you wanted it not to.
Not a pop. Oh, oh. Well, you got, you got to say strike C.
C, C's not getting anything to do with time.
The ordinance here is to be amended, amended, is the same ordinance I did say.
Look at B. Look at, look at B on your, on what you got. Look at the last sentence. Nine AM to midnight on Sunday. So. So, I mean, I. Is this motion?
Most remain saying what I just said. And so if it didn't include it and we have to come back, I guess it don't address what I'm saying.
What do you want to do with the time? We don't understand.
It's the time to state it, twelve.
The time to stay where it is. So your motion is to, is, is, your motion is to, is to take out paragraph C and to change the, and, and to adopt it as written on, as relates to time.
Right, yeah, I'm sorry for that confusion.
Listen, that's what we're taking.
I'm sorry for that.
There's a motion on the floor. So that's okay, that's okay, we're gonna take this motion. I'm not gonna be here all night. So we're gonna, so right now.
You, that says nine o'clock, you said seven o'clock, it needs to be Monday through Sunday, Sunday through whatever. It's the, that time is wrong. That says nine to twelve. It needs to be seven to two AM, Monday through Sunday, right? Thank you.
Well, what Campbell said.
That's what I've been trying to say.
All right, so, so for the record, so that it's clear, and I don't do this again. Your motion is to exclude subsection C under ten three and to remove all language, all restricted language in ten four and make paragraph A be from seven AM Monday through, from seven to two AM, Monday through Sunday. So that's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Borum.
I, I just have a question because when I heard counsel stated, and, and I, I agree, I, I certainly uh support, support that, but my understanding was that if you struck, you struck C and you made uh any other modifications, that would be a major modification and that would bring on a whole different, I don't know if we can go in and make additional modifications with this, with, with what's before, is that correct?
He struck C, that's two different sections.
No, I know, he, he got C, but I'm, well, I'm just trying to clear it with counsel because I heard. Correct, I mean, so my understanding that was, it needed to be readvertised based on what was put out there because of the it, it wasn't put before.
Okay, can we not use?
It wasn't advertised.
Can we not use this, what was stated, to readvertise and come back to us? Thank you.
You got a second reading. First of all, you can make modifications to what's been.
But I mean, I'm just trying, I, I support, I support the deal, but I'm, I just want to be clear from counsel standpoint.
Yeah, I'm making this hard.
We'll make the modifications, ma'am, and bring it back.
So.
Make a second, a second reading.
Yeah, so there's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor to exclude C and to change the language from Monday through Sunday on ten four, to make the language Monday through Sunday, seven AM to, to two AM. And that would exclude B altogether. On ten four. Takes all restrictions up to. And that's taking the restricted language out of B. So motion on the floor to second, any further discussion? Questions called, in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries and answers. Moving back, just for the purposes of moving to item number nine, I have number eight on the agenda. Hold on, come on. Discussion item, travel policy. Expense modification to allow payment in advance for anticipated expenses associated with travel for city business. Someone want to take travel policy, not everybody at the same time. Go ahead, Mr. Shane.
This item was brought to our attention by Commissioner Jones, wanting to talk about the current policy. And as you all know, you do set the policies that we follow. Currently, the city does bear the cost for certain expenses upfront. I did some extensive research. I also looked at the statute, what is allowable and what other agencies currently do. And most agencies do not provide in advance to staff unless there is an extenuating circumstance such as travel in excess of five days, which our current policy does have written in there. Or if you are traveling out of state. Right now, our policy states that breakfast is reimbursed at eight dollars, lunch at twelve dollars and dinner at twenty dollars. So for a total of meals, it's forty dollars for the day. Mileage is fifty-six cents per mile. However, if a city vehicle is used, we would not reimburse mileage to the staff. The question at hand is if the city would like to amend the policy to allow for travel advances striking the uh five days of travel.
As employees travel with the city on city business, I think that uh not knowing someone's financial uh stability status, we just have pandemic going on. I think that we, the city should uh front the money for travel for any employees that are going out on travel. Yet, because we actually sign prior, we signed for the reimbursement prior to leaving. So what you're signing, you're signing to get reimbursed. Um, right now, currently, it hasn't been a requirement on any trip that I've taken that you bring back any receipts because all the travel arrangements is handled by the city clerk. So that stuff is confirmed upfront that you're gonna attend, they're paying. And so why not get the travel reimbursement as, as you leave and go on your, your trip to pay your expense? Second thing I saw was a, and number four, the meal reimbursement is available for overnight travel only. So that's saying if you, you're going to a conference and you are there leaving six that morning to get there at eight for a nine o'clock conference, you don't get breakfast or lunch. So I want to discuss it because I saw it here and I just want to bring it to attention. That's what it says here in this policy. So the policy need revising, how much we want to revise it, that's upstairs, but I did want to bring it so that we could discuss it. We're policymakers, so that's what, that's the only thing. It really, not that big a deal to me, but as we were discussing, it's almost in the spirit of when we discussing that, you know, the hardships on the employees and we're trying to get them money, so what about when they go? So, that's it.
Any comments from the commission? The manager, you got anything else?
I appreciate Commissioner Jones bringing it up, but I'm fine with being paid after the thing. I just got a concern about being paid beforehand. Um, I'm fine, I mean, I'm, I'm good with the policy staying as it is as far as being paid.
My only thing is I'm fine with either before and after. My problem comes with when it's stated that if we are at a conference and we say, for instance, we're at a luncheon. Um, a lot of the stuff that's provided at those luncheons, we don't eat. And we're not paid for those meals. Half of the time when we leave those luncheons, we end up going out to get something to eat. So I would recommend that we have the entire per diem for meals as it stands by the state and do not limit us to um what they provide. And I can speak more specifically. We have vegetarians, we have pescetarians. And a lot of times what they have at those lunch, I mean, at those dinner receptions or even dinner receptions, it's not what we eat individually. So I will make the recommendation that that be lenient in that we have the per diem for those meals, which is forty dollars for the entire day, which still doesn't cover anything, but it's a shot.
I, I do want to say that when you return from travel is when you actually um notate the meals that you paid for or needed on your trip. Um, and I do not scrutinize that at all. I understand that people do have allergies, food sensitivities, things like that. So that's never been an issue um as far as things getting processed on our end.
I'm just saying, when we were getting paid before, if there was a conference that we had a meal that was provided by whomever, we didn't get paid for that.
Just for the record, I, I hardly ever eat that, I'm in the way, I'm very finicky.
I, I'm fine either way it goes, but um in terms of, um, in terms, but in, in terms of uh uh getting um paid prior to, sometimes when you have situations like that, uh if, if individuals don't um complete that travel, I think it kind of creates some some issues as it relates to refunding or um booking entries and different things of that nature from an accounting standpoint. Now, I do know that um I spoke with the finance director and my understanding is that they're gonna be looking at getting P cards. And so if we get P cards, um, we have the flexibility and options in there to, to um to um, do we not? Yes, I see some heads nodding. Is that not true? If you, if you don't have flexibility with the, with the P cards, yes or no?
Not with meal purchases, no.
Okay, well, in, um, well, so I didn't capture that. But that being said, uh, I agree with Commissioner Jones with the way that, you know, if you need the flexibility, Commissioner Campbell, in terms of the flexibility to be able to um purchase outside of what's being presented to you, because I've been at the conferences as well and it's um, you sometimes pay thirty dollars for something that you don't really want. At those little breakfasts that they have at the uh hotels, so I, I support their stance.
The eight dollar for breakfast, the twelve dollar twenty dollar dinner, is that state industry standard, is that policy? We give them a little, whatever.
That is our policy. I will say in my experience um in the various agencies that I've worked for, we actually did per diem based on the area that you went to and it did fluctuate. So if you traveled to an area that the state had the standard of a five dollar breakfast, that was your reimbursement. And that was part of your um travel authorization that had to be done. So that is something I think we should revisit.
City manager can attest, we went to go find something to eat and uh dinner. I say we went to find something to eat and the dinner was like, like sixty bucks, so twenty bucks. You know, so, and, and, and that's why I was saying, it's not for me personally, when I look at a policy like this, I think employees as a whole, because some are not able to front that much. And that will help, that's why per diem, I know it's reimbursement, but sometimes you get it upfront. So it doesn't really matter to me either way, but I would like to, so, so we could look at this, the amounts and try to help, help them out, be flexible. If they need it, we could get it to them upfront. It's not written in stone that we just can't give uh advance per diem amount. So that's it. I just want to make that point, uh, commission, so I won't take no more time on that.
The only concern that I have is that if a traveler does not go, how are we to be notified that they did not attend? How do we verify that information?
Nine times out of ten, they gonna tell you they can't go.
Hmm, that, that is not true, no.
What cases do we have that somebody was supposed to be, where they didn't show up at all?
I can, correct, and I can come back to the commission with that information, but that has happened. And at that point, the city bears the cost um because sometimes it's not refundable.
Well, sometimes you can't.
I understand, sometimes there's unforeseeable events, I understand that, but the, the issue then becomes that the finance department would then be responsible for collecting the money back. And, you know, that's, that's just an added layer of work.
Sometimes you gotta do work, but things happen and I, you know, let me just, let me just say, I think that um that's a valid point and it need to be addressed. And I, and so we're discussing it now, are we gonna address it now?
It's an accident, so. It's an accident.
Okay, so.
So before you do that, is it permissible?
Yes.
Advances.
But at first, so we found out it is?
Yes, per statute.
So, so can we just put some on, on the floor right now to just? There's nothing to go on the floor. If it's permissible, it can just be asked for, right?
So in other words, if advances are available and if you need one, you can go ask for one, how, and other than that, will be reimbursement, we come back just like we.
Right now, as we sit, we violate our policy, correct? So it's permissible by state law, but it would require modifications of our policy.
And that's what you're asking, right? What would be permissible if we want it, but not something that you just go ahead and advance them for. For example, I just, I got reimbursed, I didn't get charged for parking due to some issues with the hotel stay. Get where I'm going. So, and I just thought, and I get in mind, and I'm wondering was parking included, because sometimes, see, there we go, check can't be cashed, parking was not included. You get where I'm going, so I, I prefer to do it when we return. Because valet wasn't available, you get where I'm going, self parking was charged, valet wasn't available, which it usually is. And I think that's what you were adding there, sometimes valet parking is included. Now, if there are some excuse me, modifications on the stay, right? Okay, so if I get my check first.
No, I'm saying even if if it was valeted, it was the same price, it wasn't a difference.
Okay, valet is not always the same at every hotel. It's different a lot, valet usually costs more, am I right?
No, 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 but I'm saying when we do that, we all, we often know, I'm just for conversation.
She pays.
Right.
Here's where I'm going, if she goes ahead and gives me that check and includes valet parking, I take the check and cash it, I get there. For example, due to pan- the pandemic, valet parking was not available. So therefore, I would have to reimburse, I don't want to go through all of that. I have to go back and get a city money bag, go on by theater paper, you get where I'm going. So I had an issue with my with my stay and she modified my parking. So now I gotta look back because I I think I signed for it, am I right? Parking was not charged, so therefore I can't, if I would have, I can't cash the check, it's gotta be re- reprinted.
Parking's gonna be charged to your card.
No, the city, the city's current policy, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Shank, I don't mean nervous step, but um being there pointing at me, I assume I have the floor. Um in the past, um according to the city's policy, parking is a reimbursable expense. So whatever your agenda says is the cheapest way to park is what I typically book for the commission and ask that it be reimbursed to the commission.
So what's the pleasure of the commission?
That we revamped this policy, uh sit down on all aspects of it. Now, let me, let me give you a uh.
Wait, I agree Commissioner Jones with the the um that dance being available. Okay, that's what I need you to say, that's sure, is that what you're asking?
I know, I was gonna give an example of what what happened, just like you just said about the parking.
Give a quick example.
Oh, so no, just just like Commissioner McCaskill, okay? Uh I was slated to go down the day, uh I guess the Wednesday. And uh I didn't get to the hotel till the next morning, okay? So. No, I didn't get paid for it, they paid for it. They paid, they paid for it in advance, right? So you want me to pay that back? Unforeseen stuff, just like, you know, if I hadn't, tell her, I mean, oh, fine, but anyway, uh so I wasn't there.
Yes.
The city know about it because the city had a check and they called me and told me that the city had a check and see, was I there?
We did not check, we were informed by the hotel that you did not show up.
Right, so so regardless, you guys know, so why did you come back? Was that included in my check for parking or whatever? Was parking included in my check? Under your knowledge that I wasn't there that night, now that's a question.
So and that's, that's kind of the direction that I'm going. So if you didn't show up that night and we had paid you for dinner that night, you would owe that money back to the city.
Still ate dinner, I was in, I was en route, matter of fact, so if I.
You were not en route before the specified time according to our travel policy.
All right, I I I relinquish the floor.
City that leaves before the specified time, that would allow for dinner expense.
All right, okay, there's a, is, are, is there a motion? Or are we keeping the policy as is, or what is, what are we doing?
There are, Mayor, for the record, there are things that I would like to update in all of our policies. Um travel, I would like to revisit. Um I wouldn't mind putting in that verbiage, um should that be the wish of the commission? However, I do feel like it should be within extenuating circumstances. That that would not be the norm, that every time there is a travel, that it would be done in advance.
Gonna put GSA standards in?
Why are we talking about it? Can we book our rooms under our own names and not?
That's, hey, we can do that. Can we do GSA standards on per diem?
I'm not familiar with what you're talking about.
Federal standard for per diem, assess the rates, that's what you need.
Based on the error code, yes, that is something that I want to change.
Okay, so can, I'll entertain a motion to allow Ms. Shank to bring forth a draft for commission approval of the policy, of new policy. Motion on the floor, second. Motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner McCaskill. Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Oppose most carries unanimously, moving on to the calendar. Direction on twenty twenty-two calendar, Ms. Krantz.
Thank you, Mayor Hill, I'm bringing up the calendar. Mayor Hill, the calendar before you, I do need clarification from the commission as to whether they wish to cancel the second meeting in January. It's my understanding that the city commission will be in Tallahassee the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh for rural county stays. Um there would be a normal fourth Thursday commission meeting on the twenty-seventh um in discussion with the commission and that their travel arrangements for January, the pre-travel arrangements. I had one commissioner reference that he did not wish to to cancel this meeting and I had another commissioner wish that they did cancel the meeting. So I'm, so I'm leaving it up to the commission of whether they want to cancel it or not cancel it or move it or however, whatever their appetite is.
Well, my question would be, we're in Tallahassee both days and we still want to ha- try to make it back from Tallahassee and have a meeting.
Sure, we did last time.
We normally, we normally come back once, I mean, because we're we're there the day before and then we check out the next day and we're done about, what, no, around?
So that's a yes, that's what?
We normally done about two, so then we just travel back. But uh whatever the will of the commission is, um however.
So I go back to my question, is that what we're, I asked, I said we're in the twenty-sixth and twenty-seven. And then I said, we were asking for us to have a meeting when we come back. You said that's what we did the last time, so is that a yes to my question?
Yeah, that's what we did last time, I don't want to do it again.
That's, well, we we'll move the meeting, we'll request to move the meeting.
So Ms. Krantz, the majority says move the meeting, cancel that meeting.
As long as it gets paid in advance.
Switzerland.
That's a ten-four.
All right, all right. I'm glad everybody could laugh at seven o'clock at night. Um, okay, we've got that covered, any other, anything else on the calendar that you guys want to discuss?
Moving along in the calendar, um when we get to the summer months, it kept it typical to what the commission's previously done. I've got the first meeting in June canceled, the first meeting in July canceled, the first meeting in August canceled. Um and then when we move on down into the holiday months in November, we're canceling the week of Thanksgiving um and then canceling the week of Christmas.
Yes.
Yeah.
The balance is out. Don't blame me, um I'll take, I'll entertain a motion to adopt. Motion on the floor, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor, say aye. Thank you, now we move on to comments. We will start out with a guest authority today. You still awake, you still with us? I am ready for now, um. Where, we got anything in the back from general services? Justin, glad to have you.
Trying to keep this brief, um as you're aware, you approved a grant application tonight totaling eight hundred eighty thousand dollars, a hundred ninety thousand dollars in city match focused on this project. Mr. Bollingwater is here from Passerun Associates and he can speak to what they have determined in regards to what's required for a fire sprinkler system and as well as the roofing project. Mr. Cutwright, I believe is still on the phone, but I'll go ahead and speak for him to keep it quick. Uh the repair is holding, we do not have any active leaks in the roof. Um the intent of this discussion is to confirm if the commission is okay with holding off on the necessary improvements to occupy the building until we can find out if we're lucky enough to get the grant. I state that simply enough, Mr. Holmes?
Right, I mean, I guess just for clarification, if we hold off on the roof repair, then all we do is risk a leak. My question, I think their question is gonna be, if we hold off on the sprinkler system, does that mean we can't occupy the building?
That is my understanding.
It is your understanding that we can't occupy the building?
We cannot.
What kind of timeframe were we talking about as it relates to the grant? I mean, that would ki- that would kind of?
Grant closes on November thirtieth, we're, you would hope, but then thirty to sixty days you hear back, probably sixty days as to what the awards are gonna be.
About February, about January, sometime January.
Typically, state administered grants like this anywhere from six to twelve months if awarded to get a contract in place.
I have a question. Would the improvements that we do um be counted towards our match?
Typically, typically, yeah, typically you cannot incur the cost for the match until you're under contract.
Just to underline, how long do you think we probably have to wait to get a a sprinkler system in? After we decided to move forward, whether it be by grant money or city money?
I mean, I guess you're asking that as far as if we decided to do it today, how long it would take to implement the construction of it or you're?
Yeah, I mean, how long, because they're gonna have to make a decision of how long they will have to wait. So I'm simply saying, once, once the money's available, whether it be by grant or them appropriating money, how long would it be before the sprinkler system is in and we could get a certificate of occupancy?
Few months anyway, you have to get a set of drawings out, bid it, award to contractor and then the construction process processes probably about two to three month, two to three months, I would think, once they start construction.
Two to three months, once they start construction, and how long to get to construction?
Probably about the same amount of time, you know, about thirty day, you know, bid period.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to clarify and underline. So if I'm understanding, you're you're saying, you're explaining to the commission that you're probably looking at six months from the time someone pushes a button and says, go forward with the sprinkler system until the sprinkler system is in.
Unless there's a path to do design, build and award that and cut your bidding timeframe and all that and start construction right away.
Wait for the grant, Jonathan, that's how long, how many months?
Same.
Waiting for the grant? Could be eighteen months out.
Or you could be ready when the grant is awarded.
Yeah, whichever, I mean, you know, whichever you prefer.
But he he also mentioned too about the the set of drawings, sound like the drawings are not done in getting those, getting those ready, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm assuming a relatively reasonable schedule, but you'd have to start. There's no design has been completed for a sprinkler system, just the code findings that determine that there's no way around a sprinkler system. So we'd have to start, you know, with an award of a design for that system and then bid it through a standard design bid build process if that was the procurement path.
So there's no existing?
No, no.
Florida bill to go.
Well, that was a grandfathered in, right? I mean, where they was under that structure and once it changes occupancy, now you gotta meet the the required, the current requirements, so that's what, that's the, that's the threshold.
So you employing logic in this situation won't work. We tried that, we we tried it and we tried it and the building code just didn't have a logical solution.
So we're looking, uh what, um six, twelve, eighteen, six, twelve, eighteen, by eight?
I even tried to blame it on Chief Taylor, but it wasn't even his fault.
There was something that you said, Commissioner Borum, one thing that you could do is kind of what you're doing with the roof now. You have authorized Passerun Associates to proceed with preparation of those plans and bidding documents. So we could advance some of these um projects to a point where we're just not authorizing a contract. Typical of what we do on some of the airport projects, where we get the plans and the bidding in place and we put it in the procurement so that those individuals bidding on those projects are well aware that we anticipate the funding coming at a later date and they need to hold their pricing for that period of time. So that is an option.
Right, but the 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 other key point too, we're we're on, we're bidding or we're 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 hedging that we're gonna get the grant, that's what we're hedging, but do we know for sure what's the probability of getting? You know, that's, and that's where we're, I mean, that's where the, you know.
There's probable.
Well, there's a one hundred percent probability that you have to fix the roof and a one hundred percent prob- probability that you have to put sprinkler system in. So my point is that if you're willing to use some of those dollars, you can advance those efforts to kind of save on some time if and when the grant funding is awarded. And if it's not, then you just move forward, you haven't lost any time.
You know, the reality is this, you're 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 basically saying, am I willing to wait six months to see if I'm gonna save a few hundred thousand dollars? That's what you're saying. And that's just.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're in a position to be waiting in that that long over a period of time to have a building just sit and wait, so. We gotta do it, we we we're gonna have to do it anyway.
So I'd rather wait than spend, if we can save that kind of money.
We can wait, we'll wait.
I I just think that, I mean, I, we're we're talking, we're talking, we're talking at least eight hundred, almost nine hundred thousand dollars in grant funding.
Right.
You know, and if you're gonna, I'll wait six months to see if we can save, if we can get eight eighty from somebody. And you know, we'll just, we'll we'll do with the carrying cost to make sure that the facility doesn't fall apart during that time. But there are other things that we can do outside of that.
Well, that's just not, that's just the gymnasium part of it, right?
That's the whole facility. It's the whole facility because.
Wow, that's a, that's a whole different ballgame.
Because the, and so in a nutshell, it's like, so the 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 explanation was it's a K through twelve, it was a K through twelve school. And we're no longer used as a K through twelve school, which triggers all this, the other compliance issues. So that's why you got to sprinkle of a whole building. So you you would think that because the school had way more traffic than we're gonna have, that would be the answer, but it's the difference in use that triggers what's in place. And we're bound by the same rules that we bound everybody else by, and so it puts us in a very odd position. But, and I can tell you, I think there was a meeting at the county complex and I think Justin has basically tried to take every level of interpretation to get to where he is. Um in some cases, he disagreed with interpretations that were there and it all came back to the same answer. No matter who you you ask, getting second, third opinions from people in other communities, it all came back to the same answer. And that's where, um and that's where the issue is. And it it doesn't make sense based on daily logic. It only makes sense if you read the bill and go.
I thought we had the money already allocated in the budget to, we put it in about the sprinkler system and then we said we need to go ahead and move forward. Now it sound like we're going backwards and waiting, um if the money's there, I say let's get the sprinkler system going, whatever it takes, let's get it going so that by the first of the year, we can have tenants in there if they're gonna be there, we can have programs, which I know we've been waiting to see how we're gonna use that facility, especially with the community, that's just.
If we practice a little bit of patience, then we can give the, we can give the community another million dollars worth of programs. Just depends on if you want to give them programs in three months or you want to give them programs in nine months. I think at the end of the day, we're not talking two hundred thousand, we're talking eight hundred eighty thousand. And you gotta figure out how valuable eight hundred eighty thousand dollars is to a community that doesn't have a whole bunch of resources.
So the cost of the sprinkler system is?
The grant opportunity is eight hundred eighty thousand, the cost of the sprinklers is gonna be over a hundred thousand.
Right, so we have that allocated that we could go and pay the one hundred thousand dollars cost.
And then if you get the grant, you still gotta put another hundred ninety thousand up so that you can get back to that number. If you start spending the money before your contract. So you could be spending good, you could spend good money on ba- on twice, just the way you do it.
Me, Mayor, that's a no-brainer, I I say wait.
Me, Mayor, that's a no brainer. I, I say wait. For better opportunities.
I mean, we'll know, I think, I think we'll know pretty quickly whether we got the grant or not. If you get the grant, then the next question becomes, how patient are you to wait for the contract? And then we can push for the contract to come in faster and have the system designed by the time it's time to pull the trigger.
We have more control over that.
So during that time, nobody occupied the Jinkas, yeah?
What's the, I'll entertain emotions on this side, it's not an agenda item, so we just need direction. So, what's the direction of the commission? Johnson's pull the trigger.
I say wait, I say wait.
I say wait.
Says wait.
I say wait.
Three waits, Commissioner Campbell. All right, well, we're, well, we're gonna wait, and that's where we are, four to one, unofficially. What's your next question?
A little clarification. They're currently under contract right now to get the plans and bidding documents in place for the roof. Are we to keep proceeding with that effort? So that we can be prepared.
I mean, we could the bids, and we can get the bids in place and just pull the trigger, as we wait for this, because it makes more sense to do it all at one time.
How much is the cost of getting the plans, the bidding documents together?
Because the original plan was to do the roof and the sprinklers system all around the same time, and the AC.
So it's just for the roof, for the code review, it's the current scope and fee. So the commission wants to get, say, a design build package prepared for the sprinkler system. We'd have to start working on that now.
What do you anticipate that fee being about the same?
My, my thought is that you would probably solicit a design builder or a fire protection company to do that. It doesn't make sense for like, somebody like myself to do that.
Right.
Yeah, you solicit a package for a fire protection company to provide that.
And then do an award from there.
Yeah.
So, so, just to go in reverse just a little bit. We talked about offer funding, that could be used for that facility as well. Have we explored those options at all? For funding, City Mayor? Lauren?
Obviously, you haven't decided as a commission what your priorities are for the offer money. The most recent guidance from the feds only came out on Wednesday. We're doing our best to put as much certainty together as possible for you to come up with your priority list on offer money. Is it possible we could use offer money? It's possible.
Yes, so, and I just want, I'm just putting it out there. So when, when, when there's other funding sources, we'll be asked to either proceed or hold off, but we aren't talking about all the funds, you know. I just think that all of it should be discussed so that we would know, hey, if the funds are there, go ahead. But if we're talking about waiting for that, just one particular funding source that may or may not come, you know, we banking that to come, you know, it's holding up, it's holding up process, that's my thought process. We did mention the offer funding and that it was available for that source, and I think that's why we said, let's go ahead with the HVAC, let's go ahead with the roof as well as the sprinkler system, because it's infrastructure.
Beat the dead horse, we already, we already made the four to one vote.
No, but I'm not beating dead horse, I just want to be clear so that we know that those options are out there and we, you know, so when you make a decision, that it's out there, we know.
You sure? All right, so. Are we looking at design, so the recommendation is that we look at design bill on the sprinkler system?
Roof. I understood you just talked about design building the roof, sprinkler system, what you said, the contractor would do that.
LPC.
Whether, whether you call it design builder by the contractor, they would do the shot drawings, do the construction, I mean, the roof.
Sorry, remove it. Well, tell us now.
I don't know what's been discussed.
Listen, it's ten, it's after ten o'clock, somebody tell us something.
So as I understand it, and I don't know, we've looked into a couple of different options of the roof. You have the three primaries, a full tear off, which is not necessary, and would create a headache for everybody. The middle road is a roof over, there's only one layer roofing up there, you could roof over with a new system, but that would be more expensive and maybe get you a longer warranty. The, my recommendation at this point would be a fluid applied, a polyurethane that you can go over, and there's, there's two options, you can do a fluid apply that would give you a ten year warranty somewhere in the nine to twelve dollar square foot range, or you could do a, there's another version of that system that could give you a twenty year warranty, but that increases the cost. And the benefit of the ten year system is in ten years, you can go back and do another top coat and get another ten years for less than doing the twenty year now. So you're getting a ten year with the option of an additional ten year for less price, less money than you would to do the twenty year now or the roof over now. So that's, that would be my recommendation.
Sounds like you recommended a ten year.
Yes.
Okay.
So a fluid applied.
Ten year.
It's, it's a, it's a nine to twelve dollar square foot range, so two hundred and seventy to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I'm confused now, how does that fit in with what they decided to do, which was wait, why are we talking about spending three hundred thousand dollars if they want to wait to see if they get the grant? I'm just, I'm confused.
We were just presenting the alternative option for the roofing, it was part of their scope and fee to basically do an investigation to see if they could do a roof over and to do the plans and specifications to go to bid. As part of this process, Justin was able to source a company that has basically a piggyback contract, they provide this liquid roofing material, and they offer a warranty. Cost was what again? Nine to ten, ten, nine to twelve dollars a square foot, that's through the cooperative agreement through the state. If you went through with that company, we could open bid it, maybe it's cheaper, that's just this one company. They also assisted us by doing some cores of the roof and verifying that the substrate is adequate, there's some small areas of area where we'd have to replace insulation, but that's negligible. Six hundred square feet versus thirty thousand square feet, so the roof substrate is in good shape, and it's a viable option to extend the life of that roof.
But I think we've already voted.
Yeah. We're just giving you where we are with it.
Had we known it upfront, then maybe, but we're still spinning, we got an eight hundred and eighty thousand dollar opportunity, only spend a hundred and ninety thousand dollars on it, worked away, so we've already voted on it right now. So I'm, I'm done.
All right. Chief Shaw. Chief Taylor. Ms. Thomas. Ms. Shank. Chance.
Just quickly, I was asked to remind the commission that there will be a November thirty strategic planning workshop hosted by the Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council at the Ravine Garden State Park, November thirtieth at five thirty.
Community invited?
Yes, sir, it's already on our.
Ms. Wolf.
You had asked a while ago about medical marijuana location requirements in our districts. Our code currently is consistent with state law, and state law says that we cannot make it more stringent than what we do for pharmacies in our code. In our code, we have no provisions for pharmacies, this is basically what it is.
So you can put a dispenser anywhere?
Yes.
Okay, and we can't restrict? Okay.
Pharmacies are provided for under our code, I recall.
But there's, there's no, there's no locational restrictions for pharmacies or anything like that.
I mean, in proximity to each other.
Correct.
They are permitted use in certain of our districts.
Yes.
But that's just of each other.
No loca, no locational.
No location. All right, thank you. Mr. Cutright, you got nothing, right?
Nothing in report right now.
Ms. Jones.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Jones, you got anything?
No, I do not.
Commissioner Jones, I got you, Ms. Jones, staying with Joneses.
I had a list, but I'm gonna condense it, but I do want to bring this before the commission as well as staff. I may, I had the honor of riding around with a few citizens. As I stated, I was gonna do, I made the recommendation that we, as a commission, pop aboard our bus and ride around the city, you'll be amazed at some of the stuff that I saw. And I would want the commission as a whole to see it, I would like staff to be able to to ride with us, explain some of the things that we may have answers to, and I think that'll give us a better understanding of what our citizens are faced with. I literally rode just about every road in this city. And again, it's a lot of stuff that we, as a city, have not been doing that lacks, there are things that we are doing, but I want the commission to see what I saw, and I want us to be on the same page. I want us to hear the things, things, and come up with plans of the solution so that we're able to move some of the things forward or get answers as to why they have not been moved forward, and that's it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty privy to a lot of different things that's happening throughout the city or what have you. So again, we do have a lot of opportunities there for staff to, you know, making sure that what we responsible for, that those things are being done because our taxpayers are paying for those services to be done, and it's it's incumbent upon us to make sure that that happens from the city manager level, the department head levels to make sure that what's, what the people are responsible for, they need to be doing. Some of the things that I've seen, you know, they're, they're not up to standard, so that's, that's where I'm at with that now. In terms of putting in different requests or whatever, I had the opportunity to go over to the county and they provide you with a printer, I asked for it, but I had two requests I had put in. And so this is a work order number, whatever the work request is, so that way, when I went there, I was able to have something to refer back to if I needed. And that's what I think we need with the city as it relates to when people call in for service, whatever it may be, that the people can go back and say, hey, I, you know, I came in on whatever day, I'm following up on this particular request. So we need to have these type things available from end to end customer service. And so I have this to share with the group, and we need to have that available. I have other, oh, yeah, the, we have a number of things happening in our downtown area as well as in throughout the city, in the Middleton Plaza, and it's, and it pertains to safety, and this is, this is serious. If you go in three hundred block, between the three, three hundred and four hundred block, right then, Steamboat Willie's, you'll see from end to end where people are doing doughnuts, they're burning out from, from one block, from one end of the block to the next. I have, I have video footage of it, the same thing in Middleton Plaza, the same, very same things, and I'm almost sure a lot of people who travel downtown, I know, yep, yep, should have seen it. So we gotta, we gotta do some things about these particular things that's happening in the city along with other things. Now, I'm not gonna go along some of the other things I had on my list, but to keep things short, we have work to do in the city, and I want to see those things happen.
Thank you, I just agree with my fellow commissioners that we have a lot of work to do. I think that that ride, that bus ride that Commissioner Campbell recommended needs to happen sooner than later. So whatever processes and procedures we need to put in place, I would like to see that happen, and I think that would help show our citizens that we're responding to a lot of their concerns and requests, thank you.
I have no fun.
Mayor, I do have something, I've real quickly, I'll try to be brief. Situation has arisen, I think all of you, not really arisen, it's been in existence, and most all of you have had some observation of it involving a business at Nineteenth and Madison. That's that John's Recycling Center where there's almost constantly a dumpster in the right of way, or a car, or refuse or debris or whatever. There've been a number of attempts made to ask for compliance. Recently, some parking signs were placed northerly of the business, and we're told that maybe they're being observed, but the areas west of the business and maybe right alongside the business are still problematic. We've talked about various options for addressing them, and my recommendation, but I wanted to advise the commission before I got the city into litigation, is my recommendation is to go ahead and move for injunction relief, and the reason for that is because if we were successful in getting injunction, injunction relief, and injunction, then if somebody rode by, at least documented a violation, a breach of the injunction, then you could document that and go back to court to seek remedy penalties based upon the breach. And I think it would be more effective and maybe more of a permanent resolution or solution. So that's gonna be my recommendation. I realize that theoretically I've got the ability to go ahead and initiate that like I would a lien foreclosure or something, but again, personally, and my personal preference is that before getting the city into litigation, to let them know that that's what I'm about to do. So I wanted to let you know that that's my, that's, of course, I'm gonna ask Ms. Val to take a look at it, see if she believes that injunction relief is gonna be something that's available, and if she says yes, then that would be the course that I would intend to follow.
I'm gonna actually look at, look at, look at Seventh and Bronson, and then look at Eleventh and Bronson too, where they're storing illegal metal in that facility and having care for it and forever.
Hallelujah, prayers being answered. Many, many requests on that, and thank you, Jesus.
Real briefly, oh, I'm sorry. Real briefly, our work crew supervisors attended school Monday and Tuesday, they've been certified. They've been onboarded as part-time city employees, and we should be ready to put crews in the field next week. And we've got the vehicles that they're to be using, house serviced and ready to go, and equipment ready to go. We're having leadership training that I think I've talked to you about briefly, it'll begin in January, we have slots for twenty five employees. It'll be one day per week for twelve weeks. I can answer questions, but I won't, for the sake of time, I'm just hitting hot points, and happy to go back when you'd like, whenever you'd like, talk to me. We're advised that the second of the water taxis, which were contracted for now, is now loaded on transport, should be coming to black within the next few days. Briefly alluded to the fact that we've had, as is par for this course, continual issues with not getting a certificate of insurance. We're in the process of now making sure that our own insurance will cover it so that we don't have to rely on insurance of the transporter, get the thing down here and try to get this thing moving. Ms. Nino was here, she may not be anymore, go. Wanted to introduce her to you, she's a, from our staff as a project manager, West Point graduate, senior project engineer for Boeing, I think she'll be available in addition to our staff and helping get some of our projects and grant projects moving and, and moving forward.
Seen up two and a half hours ago.
I'm sorry. For me too. And that's all I've got.
Mike's on. You got something?
About the John's project. We've already spoken about this, wanting that everybody else share, with everybody else that. Uh, we've already spoken about this, wanting that everybody else share with everybody else that we were gonna put no parking signs on his side of the road. And I heard Commissioner Campbell said, mentioned, same thing I thought, put those barricades that we had on Bronson and Twentieth Street in that right of way to prevent, uh, parking in that area. Because if it's the right of way, we should be able to do that. So that's what I think Ms. Wolf has, has tasks to do and, uh, legal staff. So we would like to see something done. I know you're gonna be on vacation next week, but, um, it shouldn't stop the process from moving forward. Definitely like see some action taken down there. I gave to the city manager, he, he, he'll, he'll, he'll delegate it, that's why, before he leave, yeah.
I'm just gonna ask the, the legal to give me a read on whether she thinks we've got liability associated with putting barricades in there or concrete monuments or whatever.
That's city, that's city property. We, we wouldn't be able to put barricades in?
Hey, yeah. So can y'all discuss this tomorrow among yourself? All right.
Mayor. May I say happy birthday next week to Commissioner Jones and, um, HR Jones?
Wow, the Joan, Jones.
Happy birthday to the Joneses. Anything else, Jones? If not, we'll stand adjourned.
Ms. Val, have a good fly.